Hey, I'd like to welcome you to the September 8th Planning Board meeting for Sunday 10th Review and approval of the minutes for January 25th. We have a motion for approval. Any discussion? Call up favor. Aye. Next time you generate public hearings, I'd like to grant a motion for approval to open a public hearing for the Council on Subdivision on Route 34. Any discussion? Aye, call favor. Aye. Public hearing is open for Council on. Anybody who wants to make a comment? We keep that open. Next time the agenda is reopen the public hearing for LP Builders on Route 208. Subdivision.
Excuse me, there was somebody here to comment.
Okay, come on up. For one? Okay, this one. I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Hey, Noah. I'm just not.
I guess.
I'm in the conference. I live 10 miles from New York to where the subdivision for a common property. I'm in one concern and it's clear the driveway is located. My drug is at the end of the road. Working it down back in the eighties and I'm a little concerned with the snow ending up in my driveway. There was never a driveway again where you put the driveway now, so now where's the snow gonna go? So that's my concern. And I hope that I can figure something out here. That's that it's stolen the driveway. I think the highway superintendent's out there amongst the spot and I thought it should be moved or decided to do something here. So I don't end up with all that snow and stuff. The bend is 84, 85 feet back. I know it's 45, 50 feet wide and I was concerned that when it comes to snow, I'm gonna end up with all the snow in my driveway and I'm gonna pick it up now. But I'm kinda concerned, I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else for one? Motion to open the public hearing for LP Builders. Do we do that or? No, we're getting it. I second it. Any discussion? Public hearing for LP Builders is open. Anybody who wishes to make a comment?
John Lyons, I'm the attorney for Eric Stutt, who is a neighbor to the property on which this subdivision is proposed. I just have some short remarks to make tonight, some of which are based on last meeting. I believe that May embarked on your deliberations shortly about whether to grant a steep slopes permit and subdivision approval for the LP Builders project. As you head into that discussion, I would like to ask you to keep in mind a single word: risk. At the last meeting, Mr. Nolan described this plan as precarious. That struck a chord with me because it's such an apt description. I went to my Mary Webster dictionary, looked up the word precarious, and the definition said: A: Dependent on chance circumstances, unknown conditions, or uncertain developments; B: Characterized by a lack of security or stability that threatens with danger. The description of this proposed plan drives home the fact that if you decide to approve this application, you're taking a risk that all will be well with these systems over the next 20 to 30 years. You will be taking a risk that all of the applicant's assumptions in the design are correct. You'll be taking a risk that all the maintenance will be proper and timely. You'll be taking a risk that the future owners of these lots will have both the financial capability and the desire to meet the expenses of maintaining these systems. The problem and our fear is that you would be taking the risk, but if you turn out to be wrong, then Eric and other future downgrading landowners will suffer the damaging consequences of the risk we decided to take. We feel that would be unfair. And what makes this more unfair is the fact that the applicant's lawyer has said on many occasions that after approving this, the town won't have any obligation to step in and rescue if things go wrong. He's trying to persuade you to say yes to this essentially by saying that you should take the risk because the town won't really have anything at stake if there's a failure. Add to the fact that your highway superintendent has taken a look at this project and told your town engineer that he doesn't want to have anything to do with it. That means that my client, Eric, has no safety net if you're wrong. That's unfair. I submit to you that fairness and justice dictate that if the town will not provide a safety net, you should not be approving this application. This is true from a moral perspective and it's also true from a legal perspective. Under your subdivision regulations, as a planning-
Too many, we're sort of wrapping it up.
Yep. You have a permanent obligation to protect the interests of project neighbors. Our concerns are not an abstract. The risk here is real. If you read the findings portion of the steep slopes article in your zoning law, it twice mentions the town's negative experiences in the past with development on steep slopes and the problems that have been caused. It's why your steep slopes law was adopted. Indeed, ENCB said that this was exactly the type of steep slopes development that that law was enacted to prevent.
Okay, thank you.
I just want more-
Okay, we're keeping our rate at three minutes and because if you speak longer than three minutes, you're taking time away from everybody else.
I understand. Well, I was just intending to keep the concept of risk in mind as you go along. That it's unfair to proceed with accepting this risk if the town won't provide a safety net. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Andy Ashton from the Environmental Conservation Board of Town New Falls. I just wanted to very briefly summarize a letter that the ENCB sent to the planning board on December 7th, 2015 regarding the two lot subdivision from LP Builders. The ENCB strongly recommends that the revised application for steep slopes permit for the two lot subdivision be denied. These recommendations are based on a number of what we feel are deficiencies in the application. Among these, in the event of a major storm, there remains the potential for severe stormwater runoff and severe erosion. We believe that a stormwater pollution prevention plan should be prepared for this unique steep slope site regardless of whether it is less than one acre disturbance for each lot. We believe that the re-submission battle demonstrates the suitability and legality of the proposed septic system on the slopes of 15% to 20%. We remain concerned that the proposed armored swell is not appropriate in size for the capacity of the 24-inch taller under Route 208. We also remain concerned that flows through this taller may increase as a result of ongoing and future construction on the surveying campus. Additionally, there are still serious uncertainties about who will guarantee maintenance of this essential swell and uncertainty about how appropriate maintenance will be accomplished. The ENCB is very concerned that only two percolation tests were done for each of the two proposed dimentaries sewer disposal systems. This appears inadequate for the unique slope and subsurface soil problems on the site. Additionally, there are no moorings or percolation tests for the two proposed Pulteck UG system rechargers. And the finding required, the findings requirement in Section 140-133-B of the town's steep slopes protection law is the following finding: That protection of steep slopes is a matter of concern to the entire Town of New Falls and the establishment of regulatory and conservation practices in this critical area is needed to protect health, public health, safety, and general welfare. We point out that the downgrading lands and downgrading adjacent properties would be the preliminary, primary factor parties in the event of any of these deficiencies being proved. And we would again just urge the board to deny the steep slopes application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, are you interviewing as a representative of the ENCB?
Yes, I was. I was just appointed to the ENCB. I was not a member when this letter was drafted, but I was asked to attend it, which is very sharp.
Your initiation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Attorney General Chair, Members of the Board, I'm Joe Erro. I'm the attorney for the applicant here. Very briefly, Mr. Lyons suggested that the mayor and the mayor's deliberations as to mark approval of the application. I suppose you may do that with my understanding that you will. If you, I hope that you will approve the application, but what I understood after the last meeting was that what was primarily on the table tonight is a determination of significance and I'll focus my comments there. First of all, we also hope that people focus on risk. We think that the risk is, risk is a relative term. We think that risk has to be weighed. Not all risk is of equal concern and the purpose of this board, and I have suggested to you in the past that you've got to fulfill that risk, is to mitigate that risk. That's what the environment group reprocessed and the applicant has come forward in many different ways to mitigate that risk by redesigning a significant expense septic system, which we believe worked in the first place and was approved by ENOB. We redesigned nevertheless and we believe functions at an even higher level now. We've offered mitigation measures. The town is of course not required to accept any type of easement access. I don't know why they wouldn't because it also doesn't require them to do anything even if they need it, but it would allow them to intervene if they had to. A couple of things, in particular on the findings that's been drafted and some of the comments that were made last time in the earlier version of that Part III draft. I do want to say that it continues to mention that the system here requires the competence of the homeowner being much greater than that of typical homeowner. I think that that's just not true and it's not what the record reflects. We've made clear that this is, this would be worked and contracted out. The homeowner themselves doesn't have to have any specific ability to do this work any more than the typical homeowner needs to know how to every three or five years service their septic tank. You call someone, you do it. And also, it continues to say that it is very costly, the maintenance is very costly in comparison to standard homeowner maintenance in this driveway. And that is also just not true. The record doesn't reflect that. We have submitted specific estimates of that expense. It would be something in the area of $350 a year, an expense which we've offered to bond. People who live in special districts often pay that kind of money in their special district for certain kinds of maintenance and so, or services. So it is not much more costly. It's obviously a factor to consider, but it's not infusible and it is a factor that the owner would know going into the process. So in conclusion, I would just say, our concerns are no more abstract than our competence. There is an applicable law here. This is a taxpayer. The applicant has rights as well and we believe you've done your job and he's done it in mitigating the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm thinking about just whether we can find your left side. We don't have a long turn now.
It's going to be, we have to open it first. We have an open day ahead, but are we ready to do that? Are you ready to open the public hearing?
Yes. Want to continue with LP Builders till any discussions?
Yeah, okay. We'll continue with LP Builders. Public hearing open until we do the application review at least. Right now, I'd like to open the, take a motion to open the public hearing for Mohawk Preserve. I've raised the motion. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Okay. Call up favor. Aye. Okay. Mohawk Preserve Public Hearing is open. Okay?
The Mohawk Preserve first presented its plan for the Foothills project while I was still on the town board and I retired in 2013. Since then, they have held over 30 community meetings, neighborhood meetings, public presentations, and of course been before your planning board for the public hearing process. The Preserve has made many of the concessions you have asked for. They have reduced parking, removed an education lean-to, a vault toilet, and a wood plank nature pathway from Upper Farm Pond. They have provided a free 1.5-mile loop and they have paid all the consultants to answer questions about archaeology, traffic, wetlands, national and state historic registers, soils, stormwater, plants, wildlife. Your consultants have reviewed all these documents and as a planning board, you have taken your good, hard look. As a dues-paying member of the Preserve, today I ask the Preserve what all these studies have cost. This is not some multinational corporation with billions of dollars in profits. This is a local nonprofit and so far, my membership has gone to help pay for over $300,000 worth of studies. Please close this public hearing so my membership fees can go back to maintaining trails, providing educational programs, and all of the other wonderful programs brought to us by the Mohawk Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. I just got a quick question. Pointed the finger. That according to the article that was in the press, the city's suggested that Mohawk Preserve can reduce the amount of parking spaces in the gatehouse area and the article indicated that it was now reduced to 90 parking spaces. But now that's been a number for Mohawk. So I didn't know whether it was a question of the board fixing things up or what the intent was of the Mohawk Preserve to come and tell me that. Thank you.
Just a second. I did finish my notes and just came to go on. Very quickly, listen, I'm a dues-paying, Ron, someone from the high gas road. I'm a dues-paying member for many years too and a taxpayer. I was concerned about some of the stats that were thrown out in terms of the studies that were done. I think due diligence would require looking at those studies a little closer. Spoke about the 3% increase in overall traffic patterns, things of that nature. Not taking into context the reality of what that intersection, what do you feel the world is, what it's like in the summer, what it's like in the fall. It's a tremendous difference. That 3%, I don't know where that came up to that number. I don't know if I can see that report somewhere. Is it online? I'm very sorry. I should have looked at it. But also, a study of light communities was said. Where are you gonna find a light community similar to, you know, that's a mall or a park set that's right near a college, by the way? A busy town, a place that has thousands of people coming here in the fall and the summer. I just think some of these studies might have been self-serving and not necessarily leading to rest of our community. So, and regarding the parking, we've said all along, everybody wants to have expanded usage. I think most people want expanded usage of that testimonial gateway. And I know they threw out, there was an article in a newspaper that said that they reduced the parking request that, sorry, Mohawk Preserve did. They never did. They threw out 130 months and months and months ago and then all of a sudden it's coming out like 90 is a big drop. I think they threw out 130, just like they threw out a roundabout as a possibility for the section there and the changes in the roundabout that is that they suggested. Those were just thrown out there as ideas, but in reality, if it comes up to 90 spots, that's just not 90 cars parked. That's every day, hundreds of hundreds of cars going through there on a busy weekend at a college in particular. So we are concerned about that. I'm concerned about it. And I just still, still think as one of my neighbors once suggested, just increase the parking on Homash, decrease the parking over at the testimonial gateway. Figure out some parking on Pine Road, perhaps making Pine Road just for residents of New Town of New Falls and the Village of New Falls and Garden, you know, whatever from our community only that you can park there with a permit. There has to be some better solutions. I like the idea of opening it up certainly for free access to a lot of people. That's very generous and nice, but I'll tell you, when you have somebody, I think the lady's name is Amy, some or other, suggesting traffic lights, flashing lights, you know, as much as you love the Preserve, and you do, we all do, that night scape should not be ruined and it will be ruined. We fought that fake winery that was gonna be Golden Riverdale. That was a fake, phony winery and we had legislators in Yelster County Legislature, if they didn't decide to sue Susan, they would have sided with that phony winery because one guy, legislator, told me, "Who's a good businessman? You just didn't like Susan Wong." That's what he said. One guy said. I said, "No, it's a stinky thing. You can have hundreds of people going in and out of there. It's a dangerous corner." And this should be knocked down right away. So anyway, I certainly-
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Thanks. Good luck.
I'm Larry Dudenike and with the citizens and just like to reassert our position that we want this to end as quickly as possible, this whole debate and new lines and other things, including the plan. And the quickest, simplest way to do that, and it should be fairly quick given the work that's been done, is a full EIS. And that would be good for community rotations. It'll relieve a lot of the hard feeling and citizens obviously will live with it. And we understand that something's gonna go on and we're convinced that the plan will be better for a full public examination of it and we can go away. We would like, we would like this to end and we need a full EIS to do that.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Athlon, a bank lead captain and a longtime member of the Mohawk Preserve Board. For a considerable period of time, I served as chair of the facilities committee tasked with issues of parking structures and have been intimately involved in the planning of the Foothills project. Some of you will recall in the late 1980s and early 1990s when 400 to 600 cars were parked along 4455 from here at the Traps Bridge. Many in the Preserve at that time were very much concerned about inherent dangers and visual blight, but also the impact of the experience when visitors came to the land. For these reasons and others, the Preserve embarked on a process to identify off-road parking areas and a space for a new visitor center. I will tell you that this was not without opposition. I have a holder here for someone who would like to see the opposition at that time. This process ultimately however did lead to the opening of Traps West Entry in 1993 with 130 parking spaces and the visitor center with a total of 200 spaces in 1998. Note that these numbers, 130 and 200, total 330 spaces, which is about half the maximum number we had actually counted on a busy as weekend. I have these arrangers count these for years out there. We have, we have the counts. Some told us that our undersized lots would exacerbate the condition as drivers would continue to park on the highway. Over the last two decades, some have urged the Preserve even to expand our parking areas, but we resisted doing this. With public education, enforcement supported by the Town of Garder, and a visitor access plan which we've shared with the planning board, the problem was solved. The Preserve only seeks to accommodate a portion of the already coming tourists, not to promote tourism. The Preserve does not promote tourism. Downstate visitors know before they arrive by car, before they arrive, that a car with five passengers pays only $10 parking fee in Minnewaska, but $60 at the Preserve for a day pass and $130 at the mountain house. Folks choose with their wallets. It is estimated that two of three cars passing across the bridge go right through the Mohawk Preserve and head to Minnewaska and beyond. Our own data show that about 75% of all visitors to our parking areas are Preserve members and not outsiders. Let me just say a few words about the project under review. Now, I've read letters, I've heard a public comment, people say 20 cars are enough, 45's enough, 50's enough, 70's enough. Some have asked for no parking facility at all. Others have commented, supported the plan for 90. Our number did not just simply drop, come out of a hat. That number in fact will not satisfy demand during peak periods when our community is really overwhelmed with visitors. 90 is not a number, as I said, picked out of a hat or based on a hunch like many have referred. 90 spaces is more than the 70 in the Preserve's most remote lot at Spring Farm in Marlottown, which is visited mostly by local members and significantly less than the 200 spaces in the parking areas around the Preserve's visitor center in Garder and 45% less than West Traps Lot. Let me give you some perspective. Last Sunday and the Sunday before, I went out to the Foothills area at 2:00 and counted cars. I don't know how you can guess, were parked in the Foothills area on January 31st at 2:00. 63 people, 63 cars I should say, and I doubt that any of them were from Jersey, Long Island, or the city. All local folks out there. Ten other were in the gatehouse. In the past, we've counted as many as 18 in the gatehouse. 18 were on Butterfield Road. In the past, we've counted as many as 30 on Butterfield Road. 28 were at the top of Pine Road. Most along the road. One was at Pine Road near White Oak Bend. Six actually were on Pine Road near Butterfield Road. 63 cars were parked out there in the middle of winter.
Ryan, what do you-
Most of these local visitors would have likely parked in a managed and safe off-road parking lot if it didn't avail.
Ryan, can you-
I've got 30 seconds. I'm certain that roadside parking in the Foothills is likely to worsen if safe off-road parking is not provided. The tourists will continue to come whether the Preserve has a parking lot or not. The attraction, folks, is the ridge. It's not the Mohawk Preserve. Do we want to find ourselves in two or three years asking, "Why didn't the Mohawk Preserve plan for an adequately sized parking area?" Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I honestly thought I'd need to be up here again, but I was hoping that we'd have the vote superintendent here today. If he wasn't at the last meeting, I highly hope he's gonna be at the next one. But I guess I'm on a preemptive strike. But I guess I'm on a preemptive strike. I just put together my own plan, basically, just so everybody else can see, maybe another option. Hopefully, this is what's going to be done, I don't know. The way I heard it last meeting, I'm not sure where it was going to be, I'm just taking my little plan, that's all. What I've got is, I have an area photograph of the infamous Jacob's Lane, Gatehouse Road and 299. And you can see that literally it's like Harold in there, okay, we're looking down to the east. Now, what I did was, I took some pictures and made a sketch. Figure 2 is my sketch of how I could see the real line of Gatehouse Road. It was mentioned last week, the straight through idea probably was not safe during the last protest. I thought that was the way, after looking at it myself, I said, you know what, you're right, a little curve there in Gatehouse, and sighted between the rock that's there that pulls the poor girl smashed into, and the wood line where the forest begins, the rest of that is grass between the wood line and the rock. It's approximately 57 feet between the two, and I would think that would be adequate to come out. So, you can come out and make a little S-turn in there, and that would probably slow down the traffic coming in. The figure 3 is just looking west, 299 on the left and Gatehouse Road, and you can see the rock there. And the next one is sort of a close-up, and there's again the rock, and you can see the tree line. And again, that's where I'm proposing to put the road through. That may be your idea anyway. I'm hoping that I wasn't short. And the last figure is just looking from the tree line, looking east from Gatehouse and 299. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to swear about the other. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I've been at this for at least three years, and I have to say, really, I'll be here, we can't settle this in this way. I can't keep track of the multiple proposals for parking and statistics. We need an objective, legal way to settle this, and it will be finished, and we will all proceed. Everyone can't come up here with a different plan, and the plan's shit. I can't keep track of it, and it's just one of the things I do. I don't believe anyone here. Let's have ODIS, and this will go away, and as we develop in the long, it will be better, and community feeling will be better, the planning will be better, we'll all be better off. If this is done, we go to EIS.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, next on our agenda is public comment on any issues other than open public hearings.
I want to comment on the CBS proposal, I just want to reiterate this quote from that. I just wanted to make sure, I've had a comment quite a bit, the planning board knows what its responsibility is going to be, and specifically with a couple of issues. The secret counsel, that is kind of your guiding, says in order to issue a negative declaration, that is to not require an EIS, it needs to say, must be determined that it actually will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. That's a significant kind of standard to consider when you're thinking about these various realms that you have to go through with the EAF, to decide whether you EIS or not. And about two issues that I want to reiterate, where this becomes quite valid, I did look at the January 5th draft of the FEAF that's online, and I don't know how official that is, but it seems to affect a certain amount of the planning board consultants' thinking about the different realms. The first realm that we spoke about is concerning traffic, how inadequate the wording is there in the conclusion that was come to in the draft, because it doesn't really offer a unit of traffic adequately in that CBS proposal. First of all, there's no review of the bioburying data. It's simply taking, as the developer and the developer's consultant suggests, what is adequate, but the planning board has a chance to look at the bioburying, EIS, that traffic it accounts for, and that should be available, and it should be available to the public review as well. Second is that there's no inclusion, to my knowledge, of the new hundreds of new parking spots for Minnewaska, that will be going up, which surely will add a lot more traffic on Main Street, including through that intersection. There also is no inclusion of the third pad on that particular site, any potential traffic coming from that, and we know that the code, zoning code allows for office buildings there, which is the highest potential density of traffic, and that should be included, as well as at least some estimate of LI zone built now, the industrial zone built now, that's just adjacent to the property. Those are very significant kinds of data that should be there to get a good sense of what the ultimate traffic quality will be in that intersection. And I would point out that in the Walmart review in 1996 that was amended with rejecting the application, the planning board did in fact recognize the value of having those cumulative impact data included, to allow them to come to their conclusion about what the project will be. The second area has to do with community character, community plans, those two realms in the EAF review, and like the Walmart process for giving up closet, the EIS, I do think that you need, as I've said before, to have a retail sector impact analysis that looks at how the various products that are being sold, commodities, products that are typically sold from that CBS will impact on the other retail stores of similar nature, and specifically, of course, is the Rite Aid shopping mall, Dietrich's, the pharmacy, the Stop &amp; Shop closet, but especially, I think, the Rite Aid closet is important, because this is something that directly impacts physical human. If you knock out the Rite Aid because of what the CBS is drawing from, the potential and sewer spending in this area, you really created basically a vacant shopping center, because that is the anchor. And what is going to be the impact of that? In fiscal terms, it's going to be a lower property tax for that property, and that's a significant impact, and therefore, I think you're talking about a fair regional impact included in your analysis, and that should basically jump into the EIS. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Hughes, Post-Resident, actually a former planning board chair, and I currently serve on the Town and Village of New Paltz Comprehensive Master Plan Committee, and I'm not here as a representative of that committee. And I too am concerned about the CBS Five Guys undeveloped, unnamed development that's happening up on 299 and North Putt Corridor, and I know that there's pages of data online leading to a determination of a NAGDEC for this project, and I would ask you all to go back and take a hard look and come up with a POSDAC and a full EIS, because there are significant environmental impacts. Dave was just talking about the traffic. If you go up to that area, even on a Saturday morning, and go down to that free office, you'll see the traffic acts all the way up down there as it is now. Right on that street on North Putt, you have the fire department, and you have the New Paltz Rescue Squad. Down the other end on South Putt, you have the police department, that all have to react to emergencies on that one corner. And although there's nothing in writing from any of them, because they usually remain neutral on developmental projects, they don't have anything unless you provide a department for a turn lane. But I am concerned also about the community character and the other CC, which is climate change. We're taking out trees, we're adding more cars on. As Dave also stated, lawberry's not included, but we have lawberry, we have the throughway, we have all of the traffic that's already existing there up in that area. And what happens then is we're putting in impervious surfaces, so increased cars, impervious surfaces, less trees, cars standing there longer time, we need to be doing our share of New Paltz for climate change, which is also part of our community character, because we care. I'm concerned about the adjacent wetlands across the street. I know there's been wetland surveys by the consultant for the project manager in the current plan, but I haven't seen enough to address what could happen over there. Now, we're going to have more salt on the road, more runoff into the wetland area, that wetland directly have a tributary, only in tributary 13. And also, that wetland helps to control the clean water in that area and flood control. If you go down between the medical center on different times of heavy rains, you'll see a lot of water city that goes down into the Meadowbrook houses. So, it helps the Meadowbrook flood control there as it is now. So, with additional runoff and additional point source pollution from that, it's really a hazard. So, the other one is the unclaimed development, and our Five Guys also, Five Guys is lumped in here with CBS. Five Guys, I know Five Guys in Kings Lynn, I know Five Guys in New England. Both of them have heavy deliveries or heavy pickups for orders, so cars are in and out all the time. And the other one is the land that's not been determined that what's going to go there. These are all one project, this is a cumulative impact analysis that needs to be done, and we need to know, you know, I know it's been said that it's not segmentation, I think it is segmentation, I think you need to take a hard look at this and make your determination. I thank this board for all it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Rochie, I live on Young and Restro. Once upon a time, you could stand in the middle of Main Street and have a conversation. You could buy baby clothes, water, and potatoes, all the ages. Only one movie played every time. Some hippies stopped in on their way back from Woodstock and decided to stay. That was New Paltz yesterday. What do we want the New Paltz of tomorrow to be? There are concerns about the environment, traffic, transportation, air quality, the safety of people, cars, emergency vehicles, and the noise, the economic impact on existing businesses, and the character of the community. This is the time of significant transition for New Paltz. We need to work together to gather ideas and information to develop a plan that includes all the new projects to be considered. We need a warrant order to give us the opportunity to develop a plan for better New Paltz, not just the bigger New Paltz.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is going to be different, right?
I'm going to ask you to reopen the public hearing on CBS, and at the very least to assign a cause death to their project, so we can get answers to the following questions. Who will be the actual business entity managing this property? What does Trans Hudson slash CBS estimate its annual tax revenue will be? Their EAF says it will cover all costs to the town. This is exactly the boilerplate answer we got from Wilmerite. An EIS economic impact statement will tell us what CBS expects its assessment to be. CBS has a history of challenging its assessments, so let's know what they consider a fair assessment. Since the applicant continues to attend public hearings, or these hearings, while Michael Zierler is at the table, let's ask him if this means that he accepts that Michael may participate in these proceedings. The applicants have stated that the slip lane is already slated for removal by DOT, but on behalf of the thousands of New Paltz, Tilson, Asopis, and Rosendale residents who use that slip lane to head north, please ask DOT to meet with you and explain how removing this slip lane will improve traffic flow for the rest of us. Doesn't the applicant need a variance to their cut? How is Hidden Ridge, or whatever is going into the adjacent site, going to affect this project? The 87 Motel is gone, something is going to come before you. Clearly, there should be a plan to connect these adjacent properties. Will there be a two-way traffic road? Will people start driving through Hidden Ridge Apartments and CBS to bypass 299? It's scary enough trying to make a left out of Fryhopper's parking lot. What is it going to be like when people are heading north exiting CBS? Are we going to find a car zooming out through CBS bearing down on us? Or are they expected to just make a left onto North Putt? Are they going to try to turn around at Fryhoppers? Are they going to proceed down Henry Du Bois and make a left at De Zee, back onto Main Street? What is the plan for that traffic? Our Transportation Implementation Committee meets once a month, and they have not been asked to review this plan. Let's get their input. When people start getting hurt trying to enter and exit CBS, whoever the managing entity is will just say, hey, your planning board said it's okay. So, I'm asking you, please, make sure you really are okay with this plan.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Bash, I live on North Mannheim. I've been a resident for about two and a half years, and I just can't imagine, I use that slip lane about four times a day, I can't imagine that getting problematized, I can't imagine more traffic problems, or over a thousand dump trucks of fill. I don't see the sort of cost benefit analysis of the CBS project as being to the benefit of the community. I so appreciate so many of you who have done your diligence and your research to substantiate the concern to keep this matter open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be application reviews. First up is Turiliger accessory apartment. First up is Tureliger accessory apartment. Are you for Tureliger? Yes, sit down. So what are you trying to do? You're just putting accessory apartment in. Kelly, do you know Stacy's review this at all? Is she okay?
Oh, Karen. So she says, uh-huh. It needs to require on set forth, chapter 140-17, the code. There we are. So, yeah, so what you have with your board health. Everything good, great.
Hey, you live there?
Yes.
Do you have any additional lighting?
Any discussion?
Well, it seems like Stacy thinks everything's really fine and it looks like every other accessory apartment. It's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry. Doesn't look like there's any special things happening here.
Parking's good?
Yeah.
Parking's fine?
That was a treat when Stacy gave us her opinion.
Got a motion to approve a accessory apartment for Tureliger. Second, Adele, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Next up is Thomas Wemby. Subdivision 22, room 32 North. Did we get this back from Karen? Karen, did we get this back from Karen? Did this come back from Karen? We didn't? Okay. Okay. Mr. Wemby. What else do we have here?
The only thing that I was looking at was the civic separation. And there was a note on the plan that was approved by the health department that I give the reserve area is constructed, that a cutoff branch seems to be between the well and that civic area. I think anything that has bad flows in the earth will be lost.
Okay. And is it, we can show it on the plan?
It is shown on the plan approved by the health department.
Okay. We need to put a subdivision, or it's on the subdivision?
It's on the plan that the health department approved, and that's the one that they will build the reserve area. It's probably better on that plan than on the subdivision plan. We can put it on both.
I don't think it would be on the subdivision plan also. So we can make that conditional, approval condition. Anything else on review?
That was the subdivision.
Well, I guess the neighbor brought up on the snow issue. So I...
I think the highway superintendent has looked at this, Thomas. Did you address that? And he decided where he wanted to go with snow and where he wanted to go with ride. I asked him to go over there in the mark where he wanted it. But as a courtesy of the neighbor, I could talk to him again.
Yeah, I mean, are you really sure? I'm not just going to be blocking him in.
I guess I don't have a map. I'm not sure where the driveway comes from.
Yeah.
Thomas, which, his house is to the west of you? Is that the one that's with you?
As you're going, Mountain View, pacing my property to enjoy myself.
Right, okay.
I mean, just to let you see what the problem is. If you call it a Mountain View place, you're not going to plow your driveway, you're not going to plow your driveway into the street.
We're considering this for the town. Kind of the end of the coast, like where they put that. There's a deep tunnel on the left-hand side of the road.
Yeah, what is that?
It goes 25 foot wide from the house's property into the snow.
By the iron line in stone wall?
It's just, just above where it says edge of pavement? So is that actually, is that a, we have a legal easement between the property owner and the town? How's that, or it's just what's defined here?
It's shown on the plan.
So that's what carries through? And it means...
That's the proposal. We may want to prove, there is a standard for this. He's meant that the town assumes for snow easements. And other subdivision. You may want to add that to the map so it's a little clearer.
Right.
We will take off, this is acceptable, I would assume?
There's a letter, I would assume, that it's acceptable.
Before we just... Still wants to do the three more to the town.
So Dave, the dotted line is the, one that defines where the words are between is the easement?
Easement shown over here, Michael, is 25 by 50 feet. Just off the end of the road, off the end of the right away. This area right here.
Oh, okay. You're looking at that, I'm looking at the larger map.
Yeah.
So that's a town easement sort of place?
Look at that one.
Does it have any legal status or?
It doesn't, this map is filed.
What's the problem now? Because our representative's competition is being ranked into a town that goes down in the area.
So you wouldn't go put a shed or mailbox or anything in that?
And that's why I think in that one it should be added so it's a little clearer.
And what would you say?
Well, we have a form review before on, what's now Blackwood, I think? Subdivision is, I believe it's stone.
Do you have anything like that, Dave? So are there any other issues with this? Do they all have any other comments? I guess we can make a motion to approve conditionally on...
Do we need any waivers? Subdivision plan itself? Do we need waivers? Subdivision for this?
Street trees.
Street trees.
Curves, sidewalks.
So, and we can make a termination. See what we have done. Do we do that?
See what's not.
So if you guys sit down and you made a request for termination.
So I think he needs to make a request for waivers, right?
121 17 B waivers for sidewalks, curbs. For sidewalks, curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, and street trees. You mean that? I have sidewalks, curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs. And street trees. 121 17 B, is it 17?
I'm going to do my own decision. I wish for the addition of...
So is having technically been done about the snow. If you go over, there's a note that would go on your plan about the snow easement. I don't know. Survey, right? Yes. Snow easement. Snow easement. George, is that Matt's on the engineer's? That's on surveyors. Oh, it's on surveyors. Should go on this. I have this detail, but I don't have the note. Okay, so we need a note saying... This is standard note for the town to do this for.
Well, you can call it the option for time of the day.
All the children were sensitive to the note. Seems like they were asked for...
What else does she have?
If you grant that waiver, you're done seeking for closed public hearing. If the termination would be expected for that action, terms of the way of the law. You're going to put a final hurdle subject to conditions, including giving up all fees and... application of your fees. Since it is pretty good, it's like a lot for this recreation fee that we do to the town. And for the current, I'm going to create a lot for the, keep that for recreation. So we need to have a one on nine. It's a one on nine for more off, and we'll need to make it.
This is the note that needs to go on the subdivision plan also. We'll just pass the survey. Yes.
I think we should proceed with conditional, or we told, we've got waivers and accepted.
Well, waivers were just listed before we leave. So, really, it's conditional rule or conditions that you would have, you seem to have all the interest on the hearings, or seem to say? I mean, hearing on the final, not necessarily. So you can take a decision, grant the waivers, twelve point, take action on the... the number of, take action on the waiver of final hearing, and then take action, final condition. But you can do those on secret.
I'd like to make a motion for conditional approval, subject... First to grant the waivers for improvements to 121 17 B, run A through G. Sidewalks, curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, and street trees. Do I have a second to approve those waivers?
One second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The waivers. The next would be close of public hearing. Motion to, I make a motion to close the public hearing for warning to that subdivision. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. And then conditional approval? Conditional approval. Subject to payment of all fees and recreational fee. Added the snow easement note onto the final plan. And...
Final review by the chairman?
Final review by the chairman.
Confirming that the plan is consistent with subdivision requirements.
Confirming that the plan is consistent with subdivision requirements. And then would we, conditional approval and then wait?
Final hurdle. Conditional final hurdle will be subject to those conditions.
Okay. Do I have a second for the conditional approval? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have conditional approval and subdivision. And I'd like to make a motion to waive the final public hearing since there was no interest in the public hearing beforehand.
One second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So that it would just subject to bringing it in, getting signature by the, uh, chairman.
Conditional final subdivision.
Conditional final subdivision. requirements, so initial.
We'll be talking about that.
Okay. Make a motion for, uh, conditional and final approval.
Conditional final.
Conditional final.
Conditional final.
Okay, conditional final approval on the one, two lots subdivision. Uh, subject to meeting the.
Four set conditions.
Four set conditions on the subdivision and plan, uh, signed by the chairman.
Pass second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just get your stuff in.
So I need to do any question. Easy. Or the subdivision, the snow easement, storm sewers, et cetera.
You, you submitted a request for waiver. You've submitted to the secretary.
And add a note about the swell of the survey. Uh, ask for the snow easement note.
It's added to the survey.
It's added to the survey. And then take the final recreation fees.
And whatever you, you have an escrow account?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is LP builders.
You guys going crazy about all this? You work crazy about all this at Moxie?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, well, I'm sure I could say a resolution. It takes a. Yes, one thing that you should determine is that you gotta have approval between. And that group impacts the board assessment on the environmental aspects of this. I didn't have. In the record, technically, I have a duty. And we also have submissions that were made by the children's property owners. Respect to the merits of the application itself. As I directed it, based on the part three information we provided. I believe this is a. Application which does not require the preparation of the I S. There are not significant adverse impacts that they apply to the process. There are impacts and they are things which I believe you will not consider as you go through the. Errors of the steep slopes, the net condition, and the subdivision itself. Those are not, uh. Those are not necessarily things which are wise to the overall impact in the course of preparation. For the application that you've done and intend to approve. Would you have asked about your, uh, any representation? Drafted. You should have. You have a super. Those on the part three analysis and consideration of the pressure of significance. As well as the information in the super handle with respect to the extent of nature of. The magnitude and scale of the impacts. I directed it to help with the decision of the representation. And identify significant adverse to our own.
Has everyone had a chance to read that? Uh, is there any discussion? Anybody have anything to add?
I actually do have. Uh, we talked today and today to give you some information about the. Nature of the lot, the area of the lot, and the portion of that. For the governor to help the town's code of the streets. So in the priority, it's the. One total area is 2.06 acres. The land on the new, when you price square feet, a lateral area. Currently, I have this additional 7,000,000, six to one. Square feet is on the source, brandy, 15%. Steep slope portion of the property is in the, the two of total property area. 13% of the total property area is most greater than 200 miles. The water area will land on source 150%.
Well, you have a guy in our department.
There, there are questions of the site that are 115% located, there will be sort of a property. Uh, which amounts to 1,000, 370,000 total property area. Which will be, along with the house trial, the framework, the whole. The civic area is also a store order storage units. Located on source 150%. So no. Do you have any other suggestions, conditional please?
That area on northeast corner. Flatter area of the site at 10%. That area would qualify for subject system by the county department regulations. And it looks like the area may be big enough to put a single family home plus the subject in that. Particular area. Beyond that area, it's very steep around the rest of the lot.
Dave, a question for you. If, um. If a single family home were proposed on the lot as, as it exists now, as you just said. Would storm water mitigation still require the engineered system that they've proposed or?
No.
Alright, so.
I'm not sure. May I agree just briefly on that part three since that it sounds like that's what's on the table right now in our annual assessment. There's one aspect of that that I still may really. Trouble is that isn't clear as far as what they proposed as part of the mitigation. The. The towns involved in the potential maintenance as it's cast in that part three, I think is a little overstated. There's a December 23rd note that Dave prepared. Um, that recounts a meeting with the highway superintendent. Talking about the potential proposal of accepting the maintenance responsibilities of the proposed drainage system through the establishment of a stormwater drainage system. And that, not to say that Mr. Marks thought that the town would not be interested in that proposal, I give you some reason why. It's my understanding, what I'm seeing from the director from the highway superintendent. That Mr. Marks may have concurred in that, but I don't doubt that it's a true report of what happened at the meeting. The problem is that it's not being proposed. We're not proposing the district being created, we are proposing a covenant in private deeds that requires maintenance that makes that public record. And that will provide for the right of inspection, access, and intervention and enforcement if the town needs it necessary. So I just want to make clear because it is against part of the mitigation. It does. But the, but the. You know, what's been said here often is that the town has no interest in it. Of course, I want to make clear the point what's being proposed and I'm not sure that that is. That that's necessarily the case. There's no obligation made foistig upon the town. It's just an offer of mitigation. And I will, in any event, whatever interest they may have, it certainly doesn't tell them harm to have that ability to enforce it. It is, it is often an issue when there are private obligations that aren't met that in fact that affect public. Health and safety, that one of the problems that municipalities has is that they don't necessarily have the right to intervene and force that. That compliance. And so I just want to make that clear. And as for the E M C B, um, I think Mr. Lithgow is correct. Those, I have concerns about their conclusions. But I think that their conclusions speak to the question of whether or not you ultimately approve the application. And so the purposes of the manning declaration, I think, Mr. Lithgow's probably stated.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I think that's what's on the board right now is, uh. Passing motion to approve, uh, resolution as written by, uh, our attorney, George Lithgow, for. Uh, neg declaration on LP builders two lots subdivision. And the reason it is being that, uh, it does not rise up to the level of significance on the, uh, by the seeker standard. Does mean that there is an impact, but that no environmental impact statement would be required. So do I have a motion? Or further discussion?
Just what are the next steps after this?
Yeah, after we do secret, will we talk about steep slopes?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll make a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three.
No.
Four to one. Yes. It's, it's four to one to approve neg debt.
I was. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can I ask to proceed with your vote? Could I ask for a motion to postpone here? Since that, please.
Well, if you can close the public hearing, then there's no benefit to continuing it. Once you complete the secret, you then, you then have a complete application. To cancel the public hearing. So that's one lesson we have received new evidence, new information. We can keep your knowledge.
And I'm not suggesting that you have to, even I'm just, you know, you have to get a hold of it.
Well, if, if you have any came up, it could be, uh. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, all in secret. I'll second it. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So I had asked before, a couple of meetings ago, whether we actually even have an application for steep slope permit for this? And I think I was told at the time that we don't. But I could be wrong.
I, I followed up on that and it appears as though it's certainly come on the record. Since it's the application that one would be, that a sequel.
That would be required, yeah.
Well, my understanding is that there's not a, that they're still developing, that the town is still developing a formal application for that.
Okay.
So I'm happy, we will have to. If that formality needs to be met in some particular way, we're happy to, uh. Come back, I mean, obviously we'll, we'll do that. Right now, I'm not very specific form or application.
So then honestly, we can't.
So does that mean that, I don't know if this has come up before. Does it mean you, we just consider that portion of the code during site plan?
We prepare the standards in the code of the current plans.
Right. Okay.
I, I mean, to be honest, my interest obviously is seeing this thing through properly. Dying eyes across the teeth is as keen as yours. If you're concerned about that, I'm pressing this board. For decision, and I'm happy if you want to go there, but I don't want you to be uncomfortable anyway, um, if that's.
I'm not terribly concerned about a particular form, especially since I have no idea, but I would like to. I'd rather look at the code before I come to the table and discuss this personally. I mean, if others feel differently, so I would ask for, that we don't pursue that this evening.
Okay, so I will discuss steep slopes separately?
Yeah, so that we have a chance to read the code and ensure we have time to look at it against the, the proposal.
And if you, if there's not a specific form to go up shortly or maybe wanting this now, I'll put it in front of later that just resolves the issue.
Okay, so we ask you to go ahead and do that. And then, uh. I think everybody has this, Mike, you have this steep slope permit. I guess it's the code 141 dash 135.
Um, if I don't have it, I probably do, but I certainly have it online.
We're not going to discuss it now, but just so you have a reference. There look for it. So I think that's all we're going to do tonight and, uh, we're going to, uh, discuss how to proceed with steep slopes.
Thank you very much.
And then we can just look at 12117. Anything in the past, the age of both term. If you're not.
Let me ask George. Yeah, yeah, we need to keep it up. Sure.
Don't you go through this.
So we keep it up. Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, let's keep it up.
I wanted to start by introducing the home, the nature and gardens, and, uh. And I wanted to provide you with an MO for the address that's something concerned about.
Is this one or multiples?
It is, it's one.
Uh, let me give it to Kelly then.
Kelly, she, oh, she had it?
Okay. Okay, so you get it through, is she put it on there? We probably won't do anything with this until she gets it online so that we can all, okay, so we get it on here. Okay, uh, so.
One of the things we would like to do, give us a few minutes of our time today is to really follow along with discussions last time. The sizes of the lot, the, the bases of the size of the lot, on the site and location of the lot. And we put together some research and analysis of similar part of areas in the area that we want to do school presentation to technical testing.
Okay, you want to do the presentation first?
Yeah.
And actually, he's beside you over here.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
This is the only one that you use?
Turn it on, you're off.
Sorry.
Turn it on, you're off.
Thank you.
I'm just doing my job.
I'm just trying to find anything that might come to get out.
The first bullet, obviously, the development of the trailhead is the way to provide the
Great.
Okay. So, all right, just two minutes.
safely managed access. The second bullet, establishment of the river to ridge trail as an example, reuse of the, reuse of the carriage route as a trail system, creating meaningful experiences to accommodate all visitors. We have accessibility incorporated throughout the project. We're creating accessible route all the way up to the Humpel Marsh. There are a lot of references to making elements functional, manageable, continuing to educate visitors. And the last bullet says, as stewards, manage the properties, environmental features, and systems. And as I was looking through these, I didn't see any mention of, you know, the need to increase visitors to preserve. So the first question asked is, what if we did not have the parking that is proposed to be added to the testimonial gateway and Hasbrook House site? And the no alternative would result in continued parking problems on some of the local streets during, as we heard tonight from Ron, during even off peak times of year? If we don't provide enough parking, so if we didn't have enough to meet the demand, we would still have folks parking in certain parts of the neighborhood on the streets. We'd still have situations that are dangerous for traffic and pedestrians. So the question is, who will be parking at the testimonial gateway? And majority of the cars parked on local roads, as we heard from Ron doing his counts, are local residents, many whom are already preserved members. So it's important to keep in mind that if they're already preserved members, they're not going to have to pay the day use fee when they enter the parking lot. And then, of course, we'll have some downtown visitors during peak times of year. Some of the factors in determining the foothold's needs, a lot of it has to do with the experience that the preserve has in their existing trailheads. They've coordinated with state parks and the mountain house and continue to coordinate with them. I was looking at some notes from one of the days where we did some parking counts, the rangers hopped out, and there were all sorts of references to phone call from the mountain house. They said their lot's full, they're sending everyone to Pine Grove. So that coordination goes on constantly. Another example, observations and determining what the needs are. And Ron earlier talked about how there was a need at West Traps that was met by the preserve. The same situation existed on 44 and 55 in front of West Traps. Another way is to look at empirical data. Some of that is just collected from, we've collected a lot of it ourselves. We stationed someone out at West Traps during the peak weekend to count the number of cars going in and out. We've had folks out on site. October 2014, we had a number of staff members doing counts of parking, we had rangers doing counts, and even as recently as the last couple of weeks, there were counts done. Another way is to look at the trip generation that's shown in the traffic study, which showed 94 trips would be generated. I checked with 10 and seen about if you have a certain need for capacity, what is the typical factor you would use to make sure you're accommodating the capacity with a little extra? And he said you'd usually add 10 to 15 percent, which if you add that to the 94 trips we're generating, you come up with between 113 and 117 cars, which is about what our proposal is right now. And a lot of the determining what the needs are relates to the ability of the preserve to be able to sustain and manage the trailhead, so their ability to cover the costs of having the staff member there. This is the West Traps trailhead before, before West Traps was built. One of the other things I just wanted to kind of review, I know you've probably all seen this before, in evaluating the location of the parking, the preserve looked at a number of different areas for locating, dispersing parking as well as the main locks. And locations one and four are determined to be the most logical places to put parking with least impact, taking into account things like visibility, the surrounding vegetation, site distance, and keeping as much as possible, preserving some of the sensitive areas around the site. This was an early, early concept plan, looking at how to locate parking in circulation. And you can see it's much more extensive than what we're proposing right now. We had a giant turnaround, a separate area for school bus parking, which encroached on some of the more mature vegetation in the site. And this was parking that would be for about 120 cars. So over the course of the project, starting with the land asset management plan, which recommended 100 plus cars, the approach has been refined a long way. In January 2014, we were looking at, after conversations with county DPW and some of the other transportation officials, we were looking at 120 cars in a formalized lot and then reserving some space for another 30 to 40 banked spaces. This was before we worked out dispersing the parking between the testimonial gateway and Hasbrook House. So our current proposal, we have 90 cars at testimonial gateway and 20 cars at Hasbrook House, plus three at the existing, the existing spaces. So this is a rendering of what the lot will look like when it's completed. The trees shown are, I think, a 30-foot height. This is a simulation, the best you can do. The trees that are out there are actually much larger than that. If you've been out to the site, there are a lot of legacy trees that are giant trees, so they'll reduce the visual impact of it even more. And then just looking at what, what's the park, what's the Mohawk Preserve's track record for parking areas? This is the parking area at the visitor center. And I think this is 60 spaces, Ron?
Yes.
61 spaces tucked into this landscape here. Another shot of the visitor center parking area. And there's a mirror of that parking area. You can see how nicely it's tucked into the trees. Spring Farm is another one of the trailhead parking areas. And there are 70 to 75 cars.
That feels really small in there.
And this is what West Traps looks like now, 130 cars, very neatly nestled into the landscape. And this is, how many years has West Traps been?
Since 1993, about 21 years.
And then another one of the trailhead entrances. So again, this is what we're proposing to do. And just looking at some other, some of the lots in other places, this is a project that our office was involved in. It was a lead platinum, the first lead platinum building for a state agency. It was the Stetsonburg Office of Parks and Record. And you can see the parking for that project. There's 94 cars in the falls at the middle school, High Meadow School, 94 cars. And here are some sort of other kinds of trailhead sorts of parking areas around. Other cars that went on my place. Sam's Point Reserve, this is 74. And F.D. Morris, Samuel F.D. Morris at Lucas Grove. And that's it. Just to look back at how the preserve's proposal fitted to the testimonial gateway. Glenn, I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to-
No, I just really, we looked at a whole bunch of examples and we wanted to just kind of get some in comparison, just in terms of, you know, our lots look from the air and from the ground. These are mostly arrow shots, so just hope that's somewhat helpful in the construction, just kind of the scale and how we, you know, site it down and some of the changes that we made from the progress. So some folks were about caring, asking of where these numbers come from, how to get from where we started to where we are. So I think that will explain.
Now, how are, how do the trees survive when you have them in close? I just, I know like a couple of lots have the trees sticking out between the cars, like they survive? The roots don't, yeah, they don't die from compaction?
One engineer told us that all the trees in that West Traps lot would be dead within three years. And that was 23 years ago. And will we show that picture again?
Seems like I was up there one time, there was a big tree down across the parking lot.
We just cut the first one. We just cut the first half of the tree in 23 years.
The trick is to, when you're, to have careful controls when the construction is underway, first of all. And second of all, it has to be where the, where the certain line of the tree gets impacted, there have to be some extensive pruning done on the tree. And if you're really impacting the roots on something, so if you're impacting a third of the roots on, pruning the tree back by the third, that's what you're supposed to do, even if you don't do that a lot of times, the trees will survive.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Generally, the impacts are great every year, even like a subdivision, because you're doing more deep excavating, the bottom rock cleaning, the subusing damage should reduce.
I just wanted to see for the board, I mean, I feel like last time we had a really good discussion on traffic, but I felt like it was really reiterative about things. Just for us, just in the interest of time, exactly being really clear on our goals for right now. What's, let's get to it. What are we doing? Here we are.
You have a-
So a stick, yeah.
-port tree, which is potentially weak performance.
Mm-hmm.
And they wonder if they have any, maybe they have an accident, they're going to be sort of closed. It includes the potential or potential impacts associated with the OS identification, which is led into this essentially first draft, I think, so we're requiring that to go forward through the next couple of meetings, but it provides basis for discussion of those impacts. And we want to talk to Karen a bit about what is there and what needs to be discussed.
And one of the good information you can offer tonight, and you asked about last time, we weren't sure that we have the data, we didn't get the data.
Yes.
And it's, we're not supposed to have that, accident data. We have the accident data for like a paper session, you know, so we asked, what's the accident history at our West Traps, visitor center lot, two other slots off, three or four, so we have that.
Hey, this comes from David Stotts from County Transportation Department. David, for exercise, 100 foot hopper at the three entrances to the mall of trailheads, and he sent us a, I'm sure, fair amount of trailhead detail. In the final period, only three accidents were reported, two involving a deer and one involving a lost mirror in the West Traps parking lot after returning from hiking. So basically, two deer incidents and one, someone sighted slightly in the West Traps parking lot, took off someone's mirror. He expanded the analysis area to 250 foot hoppers, and there was only one additional accident west of the West Traps trailhead. The accident was a rear end, but the description doesn't look much more information. Some of us, the GIs brought us that information.
So there were over, about 250 foot area in five years?
Five years.
All right.
And one was currently inside the parking lot, one of them is in the parking lot. Is that, the road that's 250 foot, a straight section road, there's involved curves?
It's adjacent to the downtown, so it's pretty straight there.
Yeah. But these aren't-
The only one that is on the state island is the West Traps?
We have the gap along-
The state island, the only one in West-
Visitor Center, so it's two.
So do you have closures during the periods of each activity that are considered the neighbors? Each season and probably yes.
So, so when do you close during these?
Because I, I think what I was getting at, when you have closure of this lot, also a lot of accidents increasingly, so that may interrupt the traffic.
Right.
That seemed to be the most comparable situation.
Yeah, sure. And so these, these are the two lots that were difficult to close, like 1011 on, on those peak weekends. And we were pleased to see that there was really no significant accident rate accordingly with Ingress or EBS.
We have turnarounds at full control, and we have a NASA for people, we have a department to handle these spaces. So when we do it full, we put up a full set of visitors in each space, but we have available spots, either the West Traps or the visitor center. If there is no spots at either, in that case, that's when we take out the NAPSA trailheads, we have people pull out, we have people that are on the way to the other trailhead pretty good.
So how many cars did pull off the road, walk, through tracks? Similar to two or a lot of-
And West Traps is quite a bit shorter stackings, I would say it's only probably five cars, two cars?
Yeah. Fortunately, before they get to West Traps, they pass the sign of the visitor center, which explains the current situation, so we don't completely have to move those up there that don't allow you to come up the pool.
And visitor center, we have, we have quite a nice stack, and I would say probably a lot of longer than one closed.
Yeah, West Traps was three, and then three cars stacking, and that's always the thing to address. So we're up in nine cars.
When you say stack, you mean they pulled off the highway and before they come to the little key-
They're queuing and then, you know, not queuing in room before.
But does that stick out into the highway? I mean, they stuck up on the highway all summer.
Outsiders were higher.
No, 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 I'm saying, but do cars wait to turn into that to get the information, and they queue it up on the highway all summer?
Rarely, no. Last month, like, the last time we were here, I submitted the photograph on a Sunday, or Saturday in July, July 25th, 2015, at 1pm, to be peek out of- If there is no spots at either, in that case, that's when we take out the NAFSA trailheads. We have people pull up, we have people leave, and they're on their way to the other trailhead pretty quickly.
So how many cars did pull off the road, walk, through tracks, similar to, uh?
And West Traps is quite a bit short stackings, I would say it's only probably five cars, two cars?
Yeah. Fortunately, before they get to West Traps, they pass the sign on the visitor center, which explains the current situation. So we don't completely have to move those up there that don't allow you to come to the pool.
And visitor center, we have, we have quite a nice stack, and I would say probably a lot longer than anyone closes it.
Yeah, West Traps was three, and then three cars stacking, and that's always the thing with the rest. So we're up in nine hours.
When you say stack, you mean they pulled off the highway and before they come to the little kiosk?
And then, yeah, enough queuing and room before.
But does that stick out into the highway? I mean, they stacked up on the highway all sober?
Outside of the highway, everything.
So the one right away coming?
No, 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 I'm saying, but do cars wait to turn into that to get the information? And they queue it up on the highway all sober?
Rarely, no. Uh, my, uh, last month, like, the last time we were here, I submitted the photograph on, uh, Sunday, or Saturday in July, uh, July 25th, 2015, at 1pm, to be peek out. And there were, there were starting one or two cars waiting to get in and no cars.
Maybe you probably answered this before, but I forgot what it was, like, like for testimonial chaos parking, how long do you think people will be there?
I think we estimated about three hours.
About three hours, and then they leave and somebody else would come in.
Right.
Or potentially somebody else would come in. So every three hours.
And that's modeled after our spring farm trailhead, which also has, you know, a lot of local, um, activity. And, um, people kind of go, they take, you know, moderate, short walks with their dogs, or they go, you know, they do a loop. So we actually studied its management throughout it quite a bit. It's a separate car lot, but we felt that we could, you know, really kind of model that. Model this one after that, just sort of the means of that lot.
In a spring farm, you have any accidents? That road is pretty narrow.
Right.
That, you know, what has three houses on it and something like that?
Uh, yeah, just, yeah, one with a house in the lot, a small town.
Yeah, I mean, I always feel like it's really narrow road, and you mean another car, but you have any accidents?
Um, well, we can try to tell.
So testimonial, you have 90, 90 spaces, three hours, so about, each space can be used about four times a day. That's 360 in and out for 720 trips. And that means that would be your traffic, they were showing, that's about?
Yeah, and I would say that's based on, the 94 is based on peak hours, so, um, it fluctuates through the day. And, um, a lot of transportation in here, so I think there's a, there's a peak depending on where you are with the preserve to, with the West Traps, I think people start arriving very early morning.
Well, people frequently go climbing there, so they're there a longer period of time. So testimonial is a shorter interval, so more trips in and out.
Right.
And potentially more testimonial will lead to more, because faster turnover, more cars coming into New Falls.
Right.
To get to there.
I would think the demand, the peak demand would be, you know, the 94th, the peak demand hour, but you could have just been a whole entire network because the other hours have been tail offs.
Yeah, the hours, you know, October 15th, Columbus Day, and Columbus Case in America.
How many days a year are you looking for capacity in the lot closed?
We only physically closed a lot once this last year. We actually, um, didn't have space to accommodate anybody. The West Traps, that lot gets closed, but we don't, um, do all these cars, any cars out. You know, we have the management lead.
So you're, what you're saying at, at, what I guess what my question is, is that how many days do you say you don't have any capacity in the pro lots that you have?
All the lots.
Okay, but how many, yeah, all the lots together, how many, how many days a year is the last?
Have you guys read the statement?
So we have days when we have to put a sign saying, "All preserve, please come again." But what you're saying is we still have a line in the lot system where we go allowed to wait for space to open, right?
Correct, we still have spaces at other trailheads on the other side.
So I would say that our worst trailhead, which is West Traps, our busiest trailhead, it's probably, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna guess 30, 40 days a year.
Yeah.
Then you put out the sign and close, and so somebody may still be waiting for an opening.
So the most high season weekends, we probably have that situation.
Well, my concern, uh, what my question is leading to, and you gave your report before, is that this past January 31st, you had 63 cars in 420 spaces.
No, no, those were, those weren't in any of those spaces, those were on 420.
Oh, okay. So how many cars were in these spaces? And I'm not, I'm not sure. Yesterday I wrote down about 3 o'clock past the visitor center, those were cars in the lot. What my concern is, as far as community character goes, is that are we really trying to, can we downsize the lot or split the lot where we don't have to look at empty, empty lots for 300 days a year? Just so we can accommodate people coming up those 30 weekends a year? I mean, that does, traffic does affect it, you know, you're gonna look at the parking lot, no matter where you are. And I noticed this past weekend also, is that a lot of the parking was done all around Butterville. And it just seems that you're taking, it's 857 acre project, and creating the largest within the Traps parking lot from the fathermost point of, of the preserve. So that's, you know, I, and I admit, I really think that we should downsize that portion of the parking lot and also perhaps look for an alternative to a smaller sets and towards the middle of the preserve. Because I don't think you're gonna, gonna solve the issue of, of the parking lot spot.
Right. Well, I mean, let me just say about our visitor center, that on, on weekend, that's not where people would typically be in the off season. So if you went to like our West Traps, on a typical weekend, or spring farm, I can still see those. Even on a weekday, you can see those probably half full or a third of the lots at the time. So there is a steady, you know, mostly local baseline demand for the use of those lot. The, the problem that Ron mentioned about 63 cars is those were all on Butterville, Pine, and that, which gave us, so we're trying to get those off the road. And that would be like a typical local, you know, demand type day. So, you know, that's 60 of 90 that might be full on typical, this is now below season, not even shoulder season. In the high season, somewhere between 60 and 90, probably even more on weekend. During the week, probably 30 to 60 on average, depending on the snow weather or if it's late afternoon and people are off work. So we're, we're still trying to optimize, we're trying to find that right sized lot, you know, that gets people. And then location, we're also trying to emphasize, you know, the testimonial gateway is kind of the easternmost beginning of this property. It was designed as a gateway, you know, for different owners back in the day. We're sort of trying to realize its potential again, as, as my time, sort of historic gateway structure. And so it did be difficult to remove the parking from that area because we were worried that it would render that historic structure kind of irrelevant. And we're kind of trying to bring that back as an iconic element of the lot.
I'm, I'm not saying that, that not to have a parking area there, I think it needs to be significantly reduced. Because over this past weekend, uh, you know, what's gonna stop the people from parking where they were this week is they don't wanna walk down the open lane to get to the strip for a road.
Well, Mark, the western lot, the 20 car lot, puts an off road lot in that, in that same area in middle, middle ground. So from there, they can walk up, go to the horse and turnpike to run up the lane. So if they provide another safe off road alternative, people, people begin to use voluntarily, you know, to the butter of the road intersection.
Yes, I would think the people that are parking outside of the road, like your slideshow, those are people that are going for a quick one hour walk, walk the dog, walk the kids, take a little hike. But they're not going like day pack, they're not going up, up the ridge, they're just doing a little circuit down round.
If they were going to Duck Pond, for example, that would be more than an hour round trip. That would be probably a longer, longer trip from there. There are some runners that have, um, questions that, you know, go from there to walk into the preserve. But it's mostly, you know, this photo is such a unique, different kind of experience. And, um, it's, it's really, we're trying to bring on a right sized trailhead or a primary one and a secondary one. And then the third one, you would say, you know, so the, the first one is, is a testimony gateway. The middle one is the, um, Hazard House area. And the third one that already exists really is the end of Pine Road, which we wanna, you know, keep in places, kind of the place where locals who are in the know can go. And it's kind of
I think it was formed in the parking question, right?
There are about 12, you know, on a normal basis. They're not full, no, they're just the end of the Colossus, which is the town road. But then on these other four days, as Ron said, maybe you get 28 to 50, usually it's maybe 100 cars on Pine Road. And, you know, if we can get a portion of those off Pine Road into lots, um, on this busy space. But the Pine Road isn't much of a problem because there aren't too many neighbors. It's really Butterville, and you're worried about Gatehouse, and, um, and those are the potential for the road.
What I'm worried about, if you're talking about breaking the parking, parking lots up, this is a, to me, I like where the parking is because it's already kind of open. And it's not like it's, you know, they're clear cutting it or anything. Like if they were to put in another lot, you know, where it seems like it would be more deep in the woods, like this is already kind of, you know, the entrance.
But, but once you have a part of it also, then you don't wanna have the views, which is what a lot of people are there to experience, and also not on level. So your ADA, your children, you know, you really think it's worth it.
That's the other thing about it, yeah, it's so accessible for all, you know, everyone, you know.
I'd like to see the, um, the bus parking. We have three spots there designated for buses. And since the bus is going to have a driver, I don't really feel like we need to have the bus sitting there for three or four hours. So why wouldn't we be able to have an area that's a, a bus stop where passengers can get off the bus, um, and enter the park? Um, and then the bus driver could remove the bus, and maybe the bus could go to the visitor center or around somewhere where we don't have to look at the bus all day. And then when the people are done, the bus could come back for them. Um, I too would probably like to see a little bit less parking there. I just, I just think it's so magical there, and I am worried about seeing so many cars there. But I feel like the buses are so much bigger than the cars and top of all the gas and all the different things that the buses do, that that might be an easy way, um...
We could certainly check with the school districts on what their procedure is and if their drivers are allowed to leave the scene. They have to stay, and typically they, the bus drivers didn't wait for the children, you know, it's about a four hour.
I mean, I've, I've been a chaperone on many school trips in New Falls. And like when we go down to the city with the kids, the bus cannot park in front of the museum. So they leave us off, and usually, um, the teacher or a couple of the parents have, um, a phone number or a way to contact the bus driver. And the bus driver circles around a couple minutes before the kids are ready to come in.
Isn't, doesn't there used to be more bus parking, or is that somewhere else?
Well, we have, we have bus and horse trailer parking, which are, as one of the concessions that we've offered, and responsive concerns about, you know, multiple uses on both LA, for example. We moved the horse trailer, we, we actually reduced to two horse trailer lots and we did it to the Astor City.
I'm also, um, I have a question. How are we going to know that people leave at night? Is there going to be anything going on there at night to make sure that people aren't camping out there in their cars?
Yes, gate control and ranger controls. Um, so we have rangers who live on site, and we have late scheduled rangers in the summer. And, um, you know, we manage the gates, closing them an hour after sunset. And, um, we typically go from, uh, either A or I.
Yeah, a little, a little suns come out, and those cars.
So if, if there's still cars there when you guys are ready to close, and you get worried about the people?
No, it's, we can find people pretty easily, because the character system and more vehicles, so we're really concerned there's someone out there, we can usually, we can be typically.
We will also, if we, if we had cars in the lot and they return people, we will close the lot. And, um, and they're allowed to either call a number, or sometimes it's only escort so that they can get out. And then they have to come back later and lock it once other cars left in. Those are all things that we do for your team.
You were supposed to have someone from the highway department who knows.
Oh, my question, Mike?
Maybe the, uh, the next.
Oh, great, all right, so you can talk to him.
So Ken, I spoke to Ken today, and he's providing a few sketches. But he's providing a few sketches to Chris to look at, for realigning the, uh, gatehouse.
And, um, you're gonna get a letter to the town board?
That's where we, so I was looking at it. We have, we have a safety study, but it really doesn't demonstrate the speed limit reduction will result in a reduction in accidents. It was a, it involved a high level, uh, analysis of the, fully doesn't talk about speed, uh, to your benefit. And what he, it really doesn't identify the competition of speed. It's, uh, it's essentially it's a new law, it's real straight. Yeah, with DOT, safety limits is based on 35% of the drivers' footpath speeds that they observe in that area. So 35% is 55, speed distribution, proximity, proximity, and season. And to look at the whole section was information currently available, is on the script between the building and the bridge. Speeds are 15.6 and 15.7. So this is not compelling reasons at all yet, in addition to the data, which demonstrates that the reduction in speed will lead to a reduction in accidents. So Tim needs to, he's putting together a recommendation, allowing it before the meeting. It's still a warrant, um, acting down a question. So Tim believes it may also be some official study, and it would be helpful on questions as to what you should do with that study. DOT can do it, GAN can do it. But this is talking about existing accident rate for the highway that's currently there. Doesn't seem to be necessarily with this town. So, yeah. Resilience is not in.
Well, we talked how, I'm asking Mike to talk to, see if we get someone from DOT to come and talk about this, and CBS, has, I don't know.
They said the last time somebody came to a night meeting was about 12 years ago. There was a standing request, I guess it's still standing, but since July of last year, Kevin, Dennis Martin has been asking to be able to come to a technical review meeting for doing so. Would the, uh, would the state, the county, because everything is called ours, it doesn't have a response.
You're on my seat, okay, all right.
So it's a little difficult for it.
I have one more question, Ben. So when cars are waiting to get in, because the lot is full, and they're waiting for someone to leave on a busy day, how many cars do you have usually waiting? One, two, do you have as many as 20 waiting?
Uh, typically, you know, West Traps, which is a busy slot and most pressure, it's really usually about three. If, if, if it looks like it's gonna, you know, be more than that, and you're gonna have problems backing up into the colored road, we'll, we'll turn them around, tell them they can't wait. We'll tell them, you know, you have to go forward and wait for the next parking space open. So we'll go out to the roadside and, you know, try to tell them if you can't even turn yet.
And where did they wait?
So I wish we'd have that picture from, uh, we don't have it, it was from last week, but I don't know. So literally, they went right up the booth, or, you know, they stacked up a hundred. In the design of this proposed lot, we had 182 feet before you get to the booth. So there will be nine cars that can wait.
That, oh, that could wait within or up to 90?
Right, right, right. And that's outside of the, so it will need to be, you know, often, usually, it's a little entry at the end of the shoulder of the road.
And so if you have to tell them, so they can just go in and make a new turn and go?
That's the other, you turn them around, yes, this, um, this design shows, um, how they would be able to stack here. We then, in, um, in the plan we submitted last week for what we call our peak, our peak day parking management, we'd have two people here, a paid trailhead assistant and probably a volunteer, train volunteer, or a second trailhead assistant. We have trailhead ambassadors. And then on a busy day, the trailhead ambassador, if you can't do a quick transaction, like someone just wants to buy a day pass or a membership, you tell them to pull forward, and the trailhead ambassador then engages them here, gives them map directions, or does a more complex membership transaction. If they then say, oh, you know, I'm in the wrong place, I kind of wanted to go rock climbing, so I'm gonna pull, pull up here and go to the ridge. If we're, if we're full, we can turn them around and tell them to leave, or we can let them, you know, wait till one in, one out, um, someone leaves, you can go in. The other thing that we do is we have what we call a speed pass. If you have a membership, you can, literally, it's like a speed pass, a wraparound right here. So if we have space available, and oftentimes this happens at West Traps, for example, when rock climbers are streaming in in the morning, you know, they just use their speed pass and get the spot. That, we don't think that would be as common an occurrence here. We have a number of ways to manage. So let's say it's now stacking and the cars are getting out to about here. And we're worried that they might start to And we're worried that they might start to spill over to the cars waiting out here. We would go out and we, first of all, we'd have the lot full sign already up at that point. So when we, when this lot hit 90 cars, that sign would go up before the cars waiting. The second thing that would happen is cones, we have armed, small armed cones in the road across here. And the trailhead assistant would actually move out to this location and tell cars, sorry, it's closed, keep going. So we wouldn't even allow cars to stack on the shoulder here. And, um, honestly, we rarely had that problem even at West Trapp, where we only had about, I would say it's about five cars.
Yeah, that's what we found when we did our, uh, onset analysis and watched West Trapp. So most would be five. And it's, it's a little bit of a different situation here too because, I don't know. How many cars come in there all at once between the hours of like six and seven o'clock? That's when they demand a national character.
Oh, who would know?
Keep, keep hearing people going through this kind of, that, you know, I've gained experience in having to manage everyone
so that you don't have cars backing up you. It's something that people were just a little practice with. And we try to get people to wear their perfect armor and to merge and go walk full weight in by the traffic. If you'd rather find a space for them, you know, you don't, you don't like having people stacked up. So however, we can probably set up, whether it's again the maps that we mentioned before or a lot of the signs that already tell them where to go before we even have to wave them somewhere. We have all these different things together.
Also, our visitor center, so if they come out to the visitor center, we'll, we'll tell them, none of you go to this trailhead today. Not really any parking space. Here we can wave ahead and say, we've got three spaces left, you know, hold one for you. So we do a lot of that out of, which is like a, a regular base, um, for communications among between our trailheads.
Any signals?
Uh, the only thought I had was, the last meeting Tom had suggested the idea of a, of a pull off lane in order to get into the lot, um, so that slower moving traffic could go there. Uh, and I thought that was a really good idea and it was mentioned to you all. Was wondering if that's something that could potentially be added after the fact? If indeed actual use determines that it might be a good idea to have that? Or whether that would, you'd have to, I mean, from our walk out there, it seemed like the land is pretty level and basically be a matter of extending the road system out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know we're, we're hoping to hear more from the county also. Yeah. As to what they see as the right design for that monument.
The term of lane direction of our model is going to be terribly, terribly costly.
Oh, yes.
What, just because of development of the road and all that?
Yeah, I mean, from a cost standpoint, I don't know if that, that is a cost prohibitive. I don't know, it's going to be very costly.
I mean, what, what we do have at West Trapp, for example, is an entry atrium that, it's a paved entry atrium that, you know, is a little bit, it's not a full turn lane, you know, Araline. But it's basically an entry atrium that has a little bit of pavement inside it. So, you know, someone can pull off, pull in, but it's not a very long, you know, turn lane. It's part of the road, but I don't know if that's a possibility for the authority.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about the banking department too.
Yeah, I thought more about that. I'm, I'm not so keen on that anymore.
I understand the term, future combination of everything. The county also has to consider future addition of a, a light bike lane.
Okay.
So to, to accommodate that or a turn lane, we would simply, for our plan, we would want the culvert that we had.
Right.
We can still, like, bike lanes and roads and all of those for us?
Yeah.
Turn lane?
So they're, they're thinking about, they're thinking about road bikes, distance road bikers as opposed to...
It's fun to learn, to hear that. We, we advocated for years that there should be at least one, uh, chair.
Yeah.
Because there will be loads that are sitting on use it even with the river and the river.
Yeah, no, at least 20 years now. Um, okay.
Point to, uh, your suggestion that this might be a future thing to consider. There are a variety of instances in which I've encountered in a, basically a cycle of divisions that periodically will be solved looking at and determining if everything is working in a sufficient, the productation. We made a few problems, which are in terms of, in this case, for example, the staffing level, the, um, street parking. Because there are things which comes to your attention now that you, I mean, you have a meeting or a consultation. You make those modifications or recommend them to the people. So it is like a sign off of some periodic reviews and hopefully some structural things emerge out of that.
Thanks.
So...
I'm sorry, these periodic reviews are part of the agreement?
It would be, yes, it would be a condition or representation and we'll really do that. In some cases, it can be done in the form of a voluntary screen. But it can just be a condition of a terrible and periodic, you need or you need what is called.
Will the state even renovate this to the county?
They don't meet until the, the county needs the first, uh, land state ever to walk. So, I mean, they, they wouldn't meet until March, March 2nd.
But they were not submitted in January or October?
Yeah, they had, Kelly sent everything out. Including all the transfers, right? And we get all, we get all the interactivity.
This is the ultimate, my, 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 my department. Because they do the gate moving, the, this isn't that.
Right, we have the gate moving, this is the 249 later.
Again, sound, again, second.
It's, it's happening for a while.
Okay, I think, uh, we've gotten the draft from Carol.
So far.
Part three, and we need to, yeah, I mean, I, I haven't quite finished it, but, uh, uh, I think we all need time to, to look at a little bit more. And then, uh, Karen will be back on the next time. And, uh, hopefully you can lead us effectively through the review of it.
And, uh... That, that the 22nd?
Yeah.
I think it would be the next meeting.
Yeah.
What they, what they, I did want to clarify to the board and the representatives. There are points in which the applicant is proposing in response to comments or suggestions that have come out of the jury review. The public comments, the comments by volunteers, much as the county is part. Um, and those things are being incorporated into the application. So you should be clear that this is not a condition or opposing. This is a modified application, which is responsible to issues that have been identified. And this is the applicant's proposal to deal with those concerns part of this application. So when you make your determination of significance, you will be considering that modified application. And to the extent, one of the things we'll consider doing that is whether it is revisions, modifications, changes on the application, have a direct affect concern to the point that should be determined if it is or is not a significant adverse impact. Just want to be very clear.
Okay, I think we're done. Like a motion to close the public hearing for tonight.
Come on.
Second, all in favor? Aye, okay, thank you very much.
Continuation of the public hearing?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think we will until we do the, the secret.
So, 22nd.
Well, maybe we'll do things on the 22nd.
Yeah. You don't, you, you don't, I mean, you should announce a date, you know, for adjournment to it. What we need to have, uh, to be done on 22nd is a part of the question about whether, I think you'd better have a presentation to have, to track this stuff discussed, to have your comments reviewed and discussed. It would be each year and then have a public hearing based on
Right.
The conclusions of that discussion or, uh, the, uh, session of hearing.
I'd just like to have a meeting where we get some work done first and then...
So would we close it for now and then we open it and we have that information, or when the public has that information?
Uh, the chairman of the whole...
We just keep it.
So people will hold the activity.
So the...
The board is in large group.
Right, so the 22nd, we're expecting Ken and Chris Marks here. So that'll be the next new bits of information we have.
Should we have a report feedback?
That'll be probably the second meeting?
Maybe, maybe the second, I would imagine, conference would be.
They're usually...
Wait up 10 days, maybe, maybe.
It can be sooner, no, it'll be soon.
My, 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 my representatives, so you can, they're... So you, you can bring them up.
Yeah, I mean, probably, um...
I mean, we should have them likely before our next, this is, you said, you submitted the robotic application. That's what we had, uh, since January. So we could potentially have it for the first March meeting.
Which would be the 14th, March.
So that would be a public hearing, tissues and...
So can we, can we do that? Resume the public hearing, adjourn the public hearing until the March 14th meeting?
I'll make the motion, adjourn the public hearing until, uh, March 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see you back on the 14th, okay.
So we're going to come for the campaign, I understand, yeah, so.
So Lila, just before we leave this, um, so we have Carol's draft. Which is very detailed.
Yeah.
Thank you. So could we just briefly sort of have a, a, just a quick conversation about where we, what we'd like to do on March 2nd?
Sure.
Get your stuff for this draft so that we can...
So what are, what are, please?
Thank you, I keep saying on February 22nd. Um, so that we can, uh, know what we'd like to accomplish, have accomplished and accomplish on that day.
Do you want to sort of give the board a overview of where the issue is with the bike movement? That makes a lot of...
Yeah, that would be great. You hit, what, there was a comment in your email about getting traffic feedback, but that's still pending, right?
Yeah, that is, well, it's, it's pending, um, since you can't have the information.
Okay.
But basically, there was a few items that were added there, it was three of...
Yeah, I mean, it's all recent texts. Some track text in here.
Been a key change that is going to leave this line 20, 828. Change that to 37% or something.
So the things that are overlooked, or are missed anyway?
Yeah, that's... Didn't print that out in my mind, so I didn't realize that. Well, I can, I can say to you...
No, I can say what it is, yeah.
But the, uh, the level service, uh, was evaluated in 27, 28.
What page was it?
Uh, it's page 28, that.
I must have any previous, maybe?
Oh, wow. I have one, can you... Who's, who's like, just send that out again?
No, maybe you just dropped the wrong one or something.
Basically said, um, that the year 2017 is the, and then I wrote the year and higher expectancy in 20, uh, 2022. Lane degrees of road in 2.3 seconds in 2022 results in that long, which means the level service gave that. Uh, and no traffic control measures such as terminus in analogy for this project. But those would be, those would be changes to the traffic based on...
Put it on the camera. The earlier version? I'm getting a lot of them.
Yeah. Get the, so...
Put the data at the top.
Put the data at the top, but what I'll do is I will, I will send, I will reset it out to one to get everything read. But that's, that's something that... Um, it, it did not show a valid copy, so... Uh, and I just would appreciate some, maybe from the board is where you have these...
Okay, so we should send comments.
There are a couple of things that from Carolina we talked today came up. What is, uh, the impact on the review character is not just determined. Uh, it seems to be focused largely on game house here. We have three different, uh, action departments attached, which are being proposed. And to the extent we have things which would affect the game house, our assumptions, we would like something focused on that area of stuff, uh, the site and the potential impacts on the rest of the ground. And we've figured out the problem so much for the Asper's.
Right.
And so we'll try to focus that stuff.
It is, it's called paragons here, but, uh, the district, that's on the table.
Maybe we can pull that out into a little separate. Make it clear that it's our best, we just...
Yes, yes.
And, and we could, most of it is considered a board chair. It would be considered a dress. So the separate sections of the, uh, farm tree, as it relates to the game of seven.
Yeah, I would, I would pull that out and a little bit more information specific. But it is, it is here, but we will, um, pick up on some of that.
And that's a sort of, I think, Carol's, it's, 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 like, there's a...
There, there has been a lot of conversation about this project. See where, you know, where everybody's, quite a lot of concerns are handled, but it's addressed pretty detailed. But rest of the comments on the impact, in this document, um, so the impact from...
Sure. So, um, so if we, okay, so I guess that would be great. And then if we do that for our meeting in two weeks, is there a mechanism where we can easily see what everybody sends to you? And then, so that we have a sense of, as opposed to you just creating a, a modified document? That you don't necessarily know the source, I mean...
No, I, I can do that.
Sure.
The comment, or whatever.
Something, yeah, or something like that.
Or, or write the time boxes, whichever.
Okay.
Well, building in, we're careful about, so through the processes, that you provide input to someone, which is not having a discussion with the board? That raises a lot of...
No, no, I mean, right, so I'm saying, but precisely, so that if people are submitting written comments to her over the next week or 10 days, that when we look at this document before the next meeting, I can look at it and say, oh, you know, Amy, Amy suggested these things and here's Carol's response and so forth. So then, then when we have a discussion at the table, it's much more... Then it's easy to say, well, you said this and so forth, so.
And were you, like, counting?
Whatever Carol likes to do, I...
You would, as, as, uh, head, uh, the box?
The little box, would you, might as well, with the plaid?
Sure, yeah, I'm, you know. Um, whatever works, I, you know.
Plaid something in there.
Yeah, whatever works, whatever system you like to do is fine.
Is there any way that we can sort of cross-reference your documents with, like, public comments? And we go down the line and say, okay, that comment was addressed by, uh, on page 37, number such and such in, such, uh, the impact was determined to be...
Is it a, a, all, all public comments?
Well, I don't know. I, I don't know what's an important thing to do. I just want to make sure that people feel like we've addressed their, their concern.
I have a feeling this does that.
It's not too easy to find it. When you read this, it's like reading a novel.
Well, the, um, I have a...
It's very good.
I have a little room and, but for public comments, wrote them all down to what, to these comments in conversation, these are, um... these comments, transportation leads around, um, for any increase, and then tried to address cumulatively, um, if it doesn't say Tom's comment, um, on the, sort of, or...
Yeah, no, no, we don't want to do that, but...
They have been, um, to a very great extent, commented on.
I feel like it does a good job with that, you know, most of the sections start with, there are public comments about this, you know?
I guess, right, for people who feel, who feel that their comments are just in that and research work, I don't know, like, I'm just trying to imagine some mechanism to put them over your, uh...
Okay, you put someone's name down?
No, 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 say, uh, 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 traffic concerns or, uh, number of trips in and out or, uh...
Well, most of the comments were not that specific.
Yeah.
Also, so, um, the, I guess, required, in order to, um, the, um, the species study did not include the far, um, what, like, so those are how most of the comments were presented in the first place. And so it's not, and then...
It's not necessarily to be...
Right, just document and to, um, said, you know, these studies have been, studies have been formed, these were applied, and it doesn't say therefore. Um, but there were a few changes, uh, in my colleague's data, I had a few days about, um, why several multi-again studies and the other studies were, you know, just presented in 2015 and updated in 2016, and this is what, you know, there were response to, there were changes made in response to such as, you know, additional areas investigated, revision species, so, so that has been added to this, um, not included copy, is the suggestion.
I think what's good too, for members of the public or us, like, what I do is I just keep a running list of things I'm concerned about and I just do word searches on that, you know, so if someone does a comment and it has the word, you know, war, or whatever, just do a search, see if it's covered, done. Trick.
Generational.
Yeah, it's all about the fun.
But, I mean, the, the historical, the fragmentation, and then clearly character, uh, specifically, everything else, I think the problem for the others, but especially the, this study is done, this study is done, this study is done, so, um, if you have, if you have any concerns, just, uh, that's actually what, you're, you're...
Anything else to go?
No.
Maybe?
Nothing, good.
Okay, um, questions, I'll just send off.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Moving along. I'm saving it. It's going to happen. Maybe, maybe it's just us. Did you sign that out there? Oh, I said, let's just talk more. Yeah, so I do my best work. So, I'm stopping. All right. Maybe it's just us.
We're not done yet.
No, we're not.
It's good.
Yes.
Okay, should we take a, take a break? So if anybody needs a break, then we'll come back and just talk about, see, uh, one or two, take a few more.
Retention there. It's stuck, I mean, if you, it's, perhaps what she is...
But doesn't it eventually, doesn't it eventually dissolve and go into the...
It's, it's, or I attach some things, you have, solve in a, a...
Well, that sounds like not a good thing.
But what it's gonna be is, it's gonna be on site.
So you think it'll fix?
I don't think so. The retention, uh, maybe closer, self-service, self...
Now, when you do these, uh, bio-retention, does, does the salt eventually kill the plants though or not?
It's really...
Yeah. I don't know.
You, you notice, um...
Just a second, though, I just want to say, I feel like this draft is leaking us toward conclusions. I felt this way all along, and it's making me a little angry, and I think that we really have to focus on our board's conclusions, as this is a hard-won document, and there's a lot of language in here that I don't think we've really discussed in terms of agreement on, and I'm worried that it's just gonna get carried over and that can disarm me. So, okay, I sent my annotations over, like, two a.m. last night, and, um, you know, the thing is that, Michael, I didn't look at yours, well, I wasn't more the same.
Yes, ma'am, there are.
Um, and I sent that funny little thing from, what, 2005 about a cut corner? I haven't really gotten into it, it's only come to you, but, um, I don't know.
There's more, that's the, that's the I S.
Yeah.
M T, uh...
Yeah.
There is a, uh, somewhere, it's in, I don't remember.
Okay.
Maybe that one, um, so, maybe, also, all the part number, few, but, but one other thing you need to keep in mind is, if that was done in, 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 was the L I zones, the B two that we're in is not, there's a little piece of the L I zone right at the end, the north end, that's not being developed.
Okay.
Because that was an attempt to look at what happened to, to provide, or make sure we're, we're, along the, uh...
Well, it's just good to get a, yeah, get a little more knowledge about the area.
So this isn't, this isn't anything that's binding, is it, this?
Well, it's not binding, the general, provide some guidelines, what, in that, what more impact, would that be considered?
It looks like it wasn't in that study.
Yeah, well, what I was reading, I couldn't see how it would, uh, I couldn't see how it was anything, so, just, yeah, but I wasn't sure, it was like the, like the way of a master plan or something that would be, uh, if you approve or disapprove, you're in contradiction to your...
It looks at the potential for development in that area, the impacts, and we saw from that, as a generic model, and to set for parameters, or determining that, so there is a low parameter, we can, since you don't have it back, or, 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 it requires further evaluation. It, it, it's sort of an attempt to build a shovel-branny kind of corridor there, but so far, it's not...
Well, I saw this, uh, this thing about if you had more than 1628 trips a day, you have to widen the road at $5 million, and I don't know where a rad with trips per day are, but, uh...
Yeah, I, yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about. Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's the 95, so, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a, 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 a...
Yes.
I like this, this is the reverse of that, I'm shocked, where I'm a super old person, so, when I come here, it's good, it's good to be balanced, yeah.
Good, so you want to give us some, uh, high points of your concerns?
Well, fine things, I disagree with that as well. There's the, um, you can start, right, that's, um, um, well, I mean, the tree inventory, I've been talking about since I was a senior in high school, Raleigh, um, uh, let's see, on page two, just putting that in, they refuse to comply with the tree inventory. Seems like it should be in there. Um, I mean, I don't know, it could make some money, go through every single change, it seems like that'd take a long time.
No, uh, but if you could give us the, uh, the ones that drive you the most.
Okay.
I mean, that's the person, I mean, the chances are they share with the people, you know?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's very, it's a creative law, um, oh, okay, okay. Well, the, okay, on page four, the finding, um, the board's conversation, the, the, the , the, the, the land are not considered a significant, um, I don't see how it's possible to, 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 to impact on, and it completely changes the land in every way. So I'll throw that out now.
So that has been deleted? I mean, at least my version has been struck.
Well, that's true, that's true, okay, 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 um, so that's great, great, great.
I mean, I think the point was that it's up to us...
Yeah.
To make that determination.
Uh-huh. Um, I mean, I don't know, if we want to go through it, and everyone's asking, you know, state of the case at this time, or... Um, okay, yeah, so on page nine, um, it's, uh, um, sorry, impact on plants and animals, um, where the G, the proposal actually makes substantially interfere with the nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwhelming winter, winter habitat, um, meaning those habitats won't exist, so that seems, that should be noted.
I wonder what the predominant species are?
Well, we have that list from, um, I forgot, Holland?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have the list of everyone, um, yeah, I mean, it wasn't any, totally, you know, endangered species, but still, still species, um, okay. I mean, I feel like I'm still concerned about, where it says, with the potential future build-out at 5.4 acres, um, even though it says dependent upon a full set or, or to be performed, I still feel like I have concerns about that, which we've talked about, and I see that this, um, addresses, but, yeah, once, you know, once we change this parcel, the impacts will be irreversible, so that worries me.
If we talk about that, I mean, this issue about, and this is sort of what I presume this, things are just, we're handing out, as to do, this concern about the third, potential third development, so...
Yeah.
So, if, that's what you're referring to, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so, I mean, throughout this, there's multiple places where there are parenthetic comments or not, in the parenthetic, that say, this is the impact, there's no future or no formal plans, is some of the language, to further develop the site, or if the site is further developed, it'll have this additional impact, and, um, to me, this begs the question that I have been asking for months, which is, um, let me, let me try to phrase it a different way, which is, if this application for these two commercial developments are not approved, then there's no chance that this third pad site will get approved all by itself, and, let me rephrase that, in other words...
Is that true?
That this third pad site is in many ways contingent on this, this initial application of these two sites, that is, all of the site development that's being proposed would make it much easier to come in and do a third development, in fact, that's how it's being advertised, come and join this particular development with these two possible tenants already, that's, that's what I'm trying to do, um, and, so, from the point of view of the way I read the SEER handbook and all the other documents which relate, in terms of what our responsibility is, in terms of looking at the whole action, I, I don't see any way to avoid simply saying, we need to look at the full potential build-out and start with the part one of the D A F and work our way through, so, if I'm missing something here, I, I guess I need to have it hit over, you've got to hit it over again, because I can't seem to figure out how we can avoid this, well, I'll come closer. Um, I'm, so, the, and the problem is, I feel like there are things that would trigger different thresholds, there are traffic issues, there's construction issues, there's, um, additional clearing and grading, and all of those things, uh, done sort of in a piecemeal fashion, I feel like they're just the definition of second pitch, and we don't want to avoid that.
Good.
Sure.
The first thing about second pitch is purpose, and, and what SEER says, the second phase of division of the act, SEER action, 42132, SEER action is one, two, and three. So, when somebody comes in and they have a handful of parcel, and it's got specific use, and SEER can improve that, and that is the action to do. What SEER also desires, and, 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 and will do, is look at potential actions, uh, partly the actions that we, we more likely, because of what you do, improve. So, for example, if you have a subdivision, and you approve, and town road, on one end of the subdivision, on the other, it's all, too much shown on that town road, the town road is, uh, it's likely, you know, we're locked on that, it makes no sense for the town road. So in that case, we will, that, say, this is going to create a potential that we're working on, and, 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 and,[1741.12] So, for example, in this case, you have a subdivision that's on the front, and provides supportive access to the major property, and that then has to that in for this, uh, September 15 submission, concept planning, and some traffic analysis for each district that serves the property. The applicant doesn't have to propose to you, I don't get, uh, this specific kind of tenant who's specific, the building, this was decided, can't, the fact that he has advertised for a future pad site, and is inviting tenants on the one end, says he does constantly doing that, on the other end, the fact that he doesn't intend to physically do that, fish, down in the case, he doesn't know what that's actually going to be.
I don't know.
So Seeker basically asked you to look at something that could take place on the property, and what he requested was 3,000 feet of office space, 3,000 foot, uh, feet square feet of ten acres, and what if you tried to do that, so it would result in that kind of use, and then get at the essential site plan, and value, don't have to result in the consequence of that site. Um, there is a portion of the site that's in the IZ, our production is a firm now, and probably with that different on the, on the, the usage permitted in the IZ, it would be actually virtually feasible, uh, portion of the site, yeah, and basically, it's indicated in the OCS. So it's not, it's not, you're not, you're constraining fiction in terms of the portion of the, whether you have a speculative, or someone comes to it, you can put a, uh, a splitter kind of presidential development, fit within this, is it not something which is closed, or something which, within the applicant, is, uh, obvious, probably the applicant's perspective, that's something you do?
I just had a quick question on clarification. We keep talking about 6,000 square feet would be the permitted use for the third pad site, that's, that's what we talk about. With that, I go on to city feet, which is a, a commercial real estate site, and I see them advertising for 7,000 square feet. So, I'm just, I'm just confused, is 6,000 the one that's allowed, and they're just saying seven, or are they really allowed more than six?
The question of what they could possibly get on the site is not, you know, someone would have to do a site, someone that has a using line.
This is information I need.
If there's, um, you could get, typically, you could get a far aggression of expert feet, but if that's not.
They're huge use.
What was your comp? You, you don't really have a, it would be speculative.
But that's okay. I mean, from, from the point of view of Seeker, what you said, as far as I'm concerned, just supports my position, which is, the example of a subdivision in which they put a thousand foot road and they put two houses, they are preparing a site for what, under Seeker, you would clearly expect, that you would want to do in, in a Seeker, an environmental assessment based on the whole action, which is the potential build-out for the entire subdivision. In this case, this is exactly, as far as I'm concerned, very powerful. You've got an undeveloped site, it's under one owner, it's continuous land, they're proposing to develop a portion of the site, and because of that proposal, they put in parking, they put in road systems, to put in stormwater systems, and so forth, they are making it much more likely that the site will be built out further with at least one more pad, and therefore, it is our responsibility to look at that as a whole action. And, in a speculative way, which we're, no, but I don't think we are, because this part three, over and over and over again, says there are no formal plans to develop the site, that if they do this, and I would say, strike all that language, that's irrelevant, in fact, it's, it's counterproductive to the intent of development, is when we, we're not looking at the whole action, if we continue to put in language, first off, to say there's no formal plans, it's just false, because they're advertising, and to me, that's inconsistent. So that language put in by a traffic consultant should be removed.
Well.
And therefore, it's our responsibility to say, what is, I'm not, I'm not saying you're going to build, you know, an iron ore smelting plant. It, I mean, based on what we have that's allowed and be to, what are the most intensive uses that could actually fit on the site? Nightclub, bar, restaurant, um, and possibly office building in terms of impacts on cars in and out, in terms of parking, those are the issues that we should be looking at. And, so, so, you know, when I was in the audience, listening to this conversation about this third pad site, it was not easy to get the applicant to even consent to do this, and frankly, I feel like what we should do is avoid, is we should say, these are the two most likely intent, the most intensive uses that could likely be built on this site, given the proposed site plan and what's left for parking and is, and is allowed use. And that's what we should be basing the EAF on, as part of the whole analysis.
Well, also, that's our decision, yeah, we can just do that. What I think about this conversation is two things. One, Seeker is, seems to me precautionary, so it's constantly a perceived impact or, you know, some language is, but it seems like if so many of us on the board are saying this could be an impact, what is the downside of studying it? I don't, I've never seen a downside, and we just keep having this conversation over and over again.
You want to study it.
Well, but not as much because it seems like it should be.
What we talked about was that that would come as a separate application leader.
Yeah.
Like this, you know.
But the problem is.
Because they don't know.
You know, this is almost exactly like the process you're using, except the use for the, uh, EIS. It's the same concept, which is, you don't know what's going to take place, you do want to set some parameters, you want to understand what the impact on these conceptual uses could be, given the nature of the zone, and understand that if you approve or do the secret review on a portion of a property, where these unknowns exist, because you can't control what's going to happen.
But then, if we use, if we use my idea of going to the, the most extreme use, then it seems like it would be covered, because we would look at, you know, we would be doing the most precautionary review.
You don't need to do the most questionable, if what you're doing is a reasonable set. So, it's not a reliable, of the, the, could have significantly had a impact, but, given the nature of the uses that do exist in the earth, the nature of the activities that are actually being applied to that, and the nature of the uses that exist in the zone, you can make a reasonable assumption about what's likely to happen, and also, you can reserve basically decision on these algorithms, so to speak. So if you want to, you can barely with an office building, it seems a lot of the children propose instead of, for all that space to be some fair traffic and access to us.
We don't know.
Well, you don't know that, but what you do know, or what the applicant will know, is if they do apply the more intensive things.
We'll still study that, yeah, I understand.
Well, not only when you study that, but you're basically defining parameters, what is it? So if you study the example that you've got, you study the 3,000 foot of office and 3,000 square feet, and you look at traffic impacts of that 6,000 square foot thing, it really doesn't matter whether it's really intensive or not really intensive, you look at the impact from that distributed on the traffic network, if you have this much space, it doesn't matter what else is going to be changed and modified, that's still the amount of space that you have left, for traffic generated by any use of that property. So if you're already that close, an avenue is going to also be where, if you come to a something visiting, these guys improve the traffic network in a significant respect, in order to provide a certain amount of service. So you're basically putting the applicant on those as well. If you change or modify this from what we consider, what we study, you're up against the ceiling, you better come and do it as the ceiling, otherwise, you are going to have it in that, and if you can't mitigate it, you're going to suffer the same thing as former. That was the issue with former, it didn't have this specific number of impact, it did not propose to mitigate, so that is before denied. It wasn't, it didn't, Michael, it was, it was of original rationale, and focused on significance of the impact, not to judge there's a limit, but the meeting criteria of the significant variables required mitigation, and there was no mitigation in the post, they did not propose the rule, so that case you could deny, and that is a little rational record demonstrates the basis for denying. And on the other hand, you're basically doing that by doing this double analysis, again, if you're coming to the conclusion after your study, there's only this much left, you're going to have to raise the ceiling, and put that out, and those, whatever you come to, it's kind of, it's got to fit in this space, and if you go beyond that, and you have consequences, you figure out that, and again, when you have a plan, when you have a specific proposal, maybe you can come up with your, your decision, and also. So that's, that's the logic of this, is, you know, if they had a specific, they studied, and you know what the answer is, and you know whether or not it was in that, or whether it was a limitation, they don't have to use the random testing for, you know, who, who's going to be, so they can't tell you, this is going to be this much, or it's going to be this much, they can't tell you based on the usage, but what you have in that. And, and that's, you know, it's for the board to decide whether or not that conceptual mix that the board has been studying is actually going to be below that, but the rule defines the parameters, the rule that those ones, essentially.
However, the EAF does not actually address that. The, so, in other words, the.
So if we delete the line.
The EAF doesn't, I mean, the part one doesn't address a hypothetical bill of the site, within, and again, as defined as, as constrained by what is allowed in this district as per our code, and what would actually be feasible on the site, those are the two overarching constraints. And, they don't have that in part one, it's not actively addressed in part two, and it's more or less, um, either refuted or pushed aside in part three. I guess my point is that, that that, therefore, to me, makes me very uncomfortable in terms of doing a Seeker analysis, um, because I feel a bit remiss in not identifying, because our zone will potentially allow additional use on the site, it creates a, it intensifies the impacts of some of these things, and that's the whole point, is to analyze that in a reasonable fashion at this stage, under Seeker, rather than doing it in two parts, doing Seeker for what we know now, and Seeker for what we might know later, when we know it later, which.
Two, two, two responses here, uh, what is, in some cases, where the law's known proposal, the board has, second, if you can do that, it was, it was a, it was a, it was a segmentation, segmentation is not, what it turns into, so for example, with, Kermit, Kermit subdivision, which is totally corporate in some of the fashion, there were capital loss, which the applicant did wish to sell the property, it could be regularly, separated from a bulk of the subdivision, which did have a part of the issue of, whatever it is, traffic, access to the traffic, which was obviously on the front, the applicant wants the board to agree the segmentation, it's appropriate that, because it wasn't being done to avoid departmental review, departmental review can be done on the one lot of the center, that would be a part of the review, which was, for part of the land that was of concern, would be addressed for the, a lot of, for the development. So, the board granted the whole subdivision, and frankly, it's a privilege, but, so, segmentation in some cases is appropriate, whether it's the land, you know, knowledge of how this all develops. The, uh, other cases, when segmentation is intended to be appropriate, is, is whether it is, uh, basically a purpose, which is, it's a very, uh, price and pain situation, whether it is basically a circumstance in which you don't have an applicant who has knowledge of what you're going to do, to the extent you can be fully careful, and that's sort of, uh, could be a situation in which you'd be, where you're basically going to say, you have an extra lot back there, you're going to develop commercially, it's on point, and we're going to analyze the front part, and you're going to, whatever it is you're doing there, we'll do an analysis of that, and then you basically construct the mechanism to ensure that you're addressing the overall. So yes, this will look at your second part, but we'll also take into account the first part as well, so the traffic from the first part and the second part, in terms of your impact, and the location, it's necessary that you're going to do, to mitigate. This is third area, it's not a segmentation, we're looking at action, question of whether, you have anybody, whether this is sufficient or insufficient, so if you decide not to, part three, so we've got part one, which is looking at, okay, and now, respond to your request for, for information about the potential development of the, maybe, and then give you an issue, and you have to, and you go through part two, determine whether those connect to the, with a bar, whether, what, whether it requires further analysis in part three, and, and it's not unusual to do that in part one, the applicant, if it's something, you tell them what you can do, and you go through the process, and the secret review coming out, and just, and making your reasonable, reasonable elaboration. So, what, what we have talked, perhaps what we call, is to take the impact analysis that has been, uh, try to quantify in terms of the third essential lot, for example, we can set out a table, it says, the proposed application is 3.1, so, service, we can consequently set the whole land, so the service will be, and go through the order, go through the sewer, and go to areas of the opposite, which are, you're doing for the actual application, and add that on, and then you have a table, it says, okay, we're going to decrease gravity by four percent, or we're going to increase the amount of disturbance at the plant by some percent, we're going to increase the percentage of service by some percent, and then we will, consequently, say that, so if that would be helpful, I'll give you that information for the, for.
Sure.
Well, in the meantime, what about deleting the language that you mentioned? Seems like that would help out, but. Well, not even what about, I mean, this is, this is our, you know, board document, so, I'm going to figure on that.
I would just caution, what you need to do in this document, provide reasonable elaboration from the written record, towards the process for determination.
I gotcha. That's what I'm all about. We're on the same page.
I've given you the, uh, criteria for different parts of that process, in terms of magnitude, and importance, and/or standard, what we're going to do, part six, seventeen point seven, and the, uh, secret work, for, for, uh, I don't know.
I gotcha.
What do you think?
Okay, exactly. Well, moving on, um, page twelve, this is mine, as I discussed previously, there are few, if any, apparent reasonable alternative sites, for them to be to, I like business district of the town of New Falls, and have all the necessary attributes required for this proposed development. That, that lines works, it's kind of like, what if someone brought a project to us that's just a casino through all of Mohan Preserve, and they're like, this is the only place I could put it, there, there's no other place, that, that seems like that could refer to that. I mean, I'm not, I'm, I don't know, I just want to discuss with the board, like, I'm not that concerned about what the applicant is saying, that they have to build a certain size, a certain, you know, I don't, I still don't understand why this couldn't go into, like, an infill space in town, so I have, I feel like that's problematic to me.
Legal constraints, when you do, when you're an applicant in a public body who has power to them, uh, to, in order for certain alternatives, if you do a EAF, in terms of the overall action, you consider, you have to look at more alternatives, you have the power to go along with simple, and say, we're going to put our public history, because you. Because you, it doesn't matter whether you want to sell it or not. Doesn't matter whether you get a court to figure out a way to do it. You have those properties, because it's a seller. SEAKER distinguishes that in case of a private application. It does not have an alternative location in the EIS context, and it does not... So it may be nice if they wanted to deal with the digital side, maybe. Have sense to do that to you.
Or to like, our master plan, or our code might make more sense. I mean, I'm just saying theoretically.
You may point to the proverbial force of the word. But the force owns the property, and...
But they don't. Yeah.
You can determine that, you can guide it.
I get that, yeah, definitely. I don't think this force owns the property.
Well, including the applicant, or...
Yeah, no, we can't say you have to do this here. But just the language about few, if any, apparent reasonable alternative sites.
Generally, this is a point, the point of the applicant's use of the property. It's a legitimate issue.
Well, then, we should leave that aside, but that's not the point.
There are multiple places where it's mentioned. Piers, in here, at least three that I can think of. And it is, again, it's language that I find very misleading, because it suggests that the applicant, it implies that the applicant has considered alternatives throughout, whether they have a capacity, it's a, it seems to me, phrase. And the result is that this is the only place that they can reasonably expect to be able to build the proposed act, the proposed wealth. And that's independent of whether or not they have actually done it and considered other sites. And as you point out, that we can't control what they don't have what potential to own. But, but because this is in here as if it is a way for the plan board to say, despite these various concerns we may have, this applicant has come forward with this proposal, and because there's no other place they can build it, we may have to consider these concerns to be less important, because we can't deny them their right to do anything that would be conceived as a cave or something like that. That's, that's sort of the way I read this. And the fact of the matter is, although I understand what you're saying, but the reality is that CBS has come, and I say CBS here, because it's my, my strong feeling that this project is largely to be driven by a major tenant, which is CBS. And the five guys are not driving this process. And CBS has come into New Falls before, at least once that I know of, and considered a site a little further west on Main Street. And the reality is that there are at least three or four other sites within a quarter of a mile of this, where CBS could potentially build. And at least three of them are, would require very little clearing and grading effects. Essentially, no clearing and some breaking. And one would actually be moving into an existing shopping center. So we can't make them do that, but from the, when we consider things like impact on the community, impacts on traffic, as we move forward and evaluate those, as we consider whether or not we have the information we need, and whether these impacts are substantial enough to require an EIS where they would consider alternatives. I realize the alternatives don't have to be considered off-site either, but from a, from a practical point of view, the point is they could potentially get what they wanted, which is a CBS in New Falls, without having to have the impacts that this particular property has if it's developed to the, with the uses that they're considering and the potential future use. There are other sites that are already paved, they're open, they're a couple acres, they're right on Main Street, and the result is they're far similar from a, from a developer's point of view to actually develop. And...
Who should normally lead the office of that? That's not too serious, it's good.
It's not a comment I'm going to make, you know, and I want to be careful about things I may have said in the past compared to what I'm saying now. But, you know, they have a certain business model, they have a way that they want to do business. That has changed over the years, and it may be that those sites don't quite need that business model. So that's, but, but our job is to, our job is to consider the impact on the content of the whole community, and what development of this site has. Whether it was never somebody else with a similar level of impact, whether it was a homegrown business who wanted to do a similar sort of thing, the impacts would be the same. And I don't care if they're corporate or homegrown. I'm concerned about the impacts of a certain level of development at a certain location. And I feel that these kinds of, these kinds, this kind of language is inconsistent with how I feel. The majority of the board feels differently than it states. But I, I would just, to me, it's wrong to say...
I don't necessarily think it needs to be there.
You're talking about the building and the language.
Oh, gotcha. But the ones that you're concerned about, the discussion of alternatives, is not something which is generally relevant to you.
Oh, I agree.
So let's go to you next time.
For looking at a, for looking at different alternatives, for looking at a platform, different alternatives, which is about the municipal access. So it's not a case of the major, like, some other...
Okay, great.
I just wonder how many times when there is an EIS, whether the alternative is even considered. I mean, they can mention these things, but how many, I can't think, I mean, in cases where there was an EIS, where they said, oh, jeez, we did all this, and we decided that we should have been over here. I don't, I just don't think it happens, you know. I think it's, it's sort of a mockery of the whole concept.
For a location, the, I know, but when you went through the process with the board, it was a...
It wasn't an alternative.
When we considered alternative, it wasn't what we originally thought. It doesn't, we are starting to realize that alternative is third. So in some cases, it can drive the, and that's sort of the purpose of, purpose of alternatives. That's the purpose of maybe saying, well, counterintuits, if you can do it better, or either different on here, or maybe do it better in general this way, or you want to do a progress plan, and so on. There is the ball of course aspect of this, where you can say, your building doesn't do any good in the character of our union, so why don't you change it? Gives you that, so the alternative locations, probably through stuff.
Well, I'm kind of skipping around. I mean, I guess, if anyone on the board has any problems with any one of the patients, maybe we can go through those instead of going through all of them, but, um...
I've done two more points of information. What do you like since third grade?
Three minutes, you want to get three?
Third grade, uh, third grade permitted. We got, I can't recall the instance which that has been done in the past, in context of a site plan. This, this guy's the one who stays with me. And if you look at third grade, there is an examiner who blocks when both activities don't keep our code. Uh, it's a lot of confusion, or a lot of confusion, in that sense. So talking into your position, we haven't done it before, driven the state of those site plans for me, for a period of a section, this is part of my current grading law, and your activity creates a stop, which is just a drop, you know, what's up with it? Which is consistent with, uh, the intention of purpose, to make sure, to clear the grade section, it was intended to make sure that your cover, look at basically doing their setting for the, and, well, you know, pre-application setting.
Right, exactly.
You can't do that without having a private, you know, you have.
So it's second, it's in the legal.
Oh, yeah, the 200, the 200, it's in the, it's in the grade law, so, uh, the big standard is that it's something that the traffic is going to be, uh, a few of my decisions will be in the grade law, but the thing now is that you, so if you have a big requirement with that, for the bottom line, it's difficult to, that's true for that. But that's what we're looking at.
But, but we have a lot.
You have a lot, because it's a process, but it tells you all the food, but on the front, so you can keep all the trees on the front.
Yeah.
And so you have to, you know, do all the, so you apply those standards.
I still want to know what trees are going to fall into there. To me, that's reasonable.
Which is, or, uh, why?
Oh, I didn't work on that.
What, what you can put on the, you know, don't get a clearing of the grade. Um, the other point relates to the fact that the, the litigation of Hampton, one of the other issues, the petition was that Hampton, not consistent, was standing out there, and the complaint started extensively from, and the, one of the, 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 the point that was made in this box, that, you know, our papers, was that although that comes with those, continuing that as a general reference, does describe the area of the two district, out in the vicinity of those applications, the question, as being virtual domain, and the, to get the example, from the, basically something that says, you probably do it yourself, it's not consistent. And that, the interpretation was made, the decision that we were able to, to imagine that by approving the hotel. And that's a fair advantage, but I'll, it's a lot. The system would be two zones.
But just because it's consistent with zoning doesn't mean that it is an excellent project for your town, just because it's commercially dominant, you know? I just don't get your point.
The point is, is that we have taken the position that in some parts of the two zone district, is not, you know, a small, however, why, or, I just find that, that was an issue, it's a little bit in.
Okay. But it's still the gateway to our town.
Well, the question is, do we approve a hotel on this side? And the question, they approved, approved a hotel on this side, which is, uh.
So we should just do whatever then?
No, the question is, what's the issue that you, you have to, you follow precedent for a distinction. So you need to have a rationale that you can offer, of the applicant, following, and, or, that says, if you did it this way over here, or if you do it this way over here, here's the logic, you can do that.
I guess I don't see the two projects being that similar, but, okay.
So, so one distinction is, um, Hampton was built on a lot in which there was a warehouse, it was a cleared lot, and then it had been paved and built on previously. This is an undeveloped lot. That's one issue. Second issue is that in its proximity to where a substantial amount of traffic comes, on one side, northern side, is actually fairly different from what happens on the, no? Not true?
Actually, not, uh, we will do our, for, for, uh, plus there's a, Harwood Street comes out, which is.
Well, that's, that's an issue, remember, that's an issue.
It was the complex intersection.
It is, okay.
Um, so.
There's another.
Yeah, I mean, before, before, there is, you know, initiative inside.
Well, there's exempt, it's listed as exempt activity for clearing, grading site preparation, clearing, grading, filling, cutting, or removal of trees, which is in compliance with any site plan. So it sounds like that you don't need a clearing and grading, that that's implied.
You know, we, you know, that, you know, one of the ones that, and in fact, we have done, uh, I would say it is, uh, there is no permit department, but there is.
So compliance?
Yeah, there is, there is.
Yeah, but it's done, it's done during the site plan approval, hasn't been granted.
No, I'm just saying that they, it's, it's, it seems like that it's assumed that involving the site, you're going to be clearing and grading.
Yes, and you have, can you?
Like you couldn't approve the site plan and then deny the clearing and grading plan and block the action.
Interesting.
My point, the original permit, clearing the grade, for this site plan, for, like, how it was clearing the grade, will include the, all the actions, you know, standards, and decide how all the actions that you did, will get seen in that context. While, so, is this being done in a way that creates, in fact, that it's being, you go through that process, and maybe we can operate.
Yeah. No, yeah, no, I agree with that, that's fine.
Okay, moving on, page 24.
Did you just start the track?
Yeah, I kind of did, but maybe definitely come back to that.
So my question, I just have a question in general, because we've been told that someone has spoken to this today, over and over again about this complaint, that the DOT is getting rid of it. So do we have proof that, that, that is, the, do you have the, the recommendations to get rid of it? I mean, I keep hearing it over and over again. But, but do we know that for that, or it's just what these guys told us and we haven't, you know, like, yes?
It's in a letter from D O T.
That they said that they want, or it's just not, I mean.
Yeah, it's about, because they're doing that pedestrian crosswalk there, and they can't do the pedestrian crosswalk without a, so.
So we're losing that either way, no matter what.
Yeah.
Unless we argue with DOT, but we can have a number of meetings.
But they own it, so I guess that's, we're going to lose that argument. I mean, it's the right of way.
Yeah.
They really take authority even off the right of way down, cut corners, cut that out, playing another couple hundred feet beyond, whatever.
If the DOT doesn't want to come and speak to us, should we maybe consider sending a letter to the T I C, where I know there is a DOT representative that comes to their monthly meeting, or?
You know that person too. He's a very good person. Happens to be the head of the finance.
So maybe we want to get in touch with that person.
Well, you know, you didn't want to, it comes to, in, like, meeting.
But without the, but without the DOT person.
Well, maybe it was true, because certainly, they won't meet, maybe, I mean, I think it's, well, do you have?
I mean, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea. Isn't that the function of the T I C?
Well, uh, I'm not sure what the exact, sure, the, the, yeah, I don't think they did all the work, but I think that was, uh, the, the, or, is, not, or, you thought it would come to the bill.
I'd like to make a motion to invite the T I C, including their DOT representative, to one of our meetings, maybe not the next one, but the one after.
Set that.
On the paper.
So he can speak for the DOT, but he can give you some background information.
So how does that work? Now Kelly communicates with T I C, invites them?
Is that something you can do? Can do that?
Yeah.
Mark Sherman's on there?
Representative to the DOT.
No, the person actually works at the DOT.
I found the letter from DOT that I talked about, the slip lane, if anyone's interested. From 10/22/14. Uh, let's see. As you know, where CBS will be a new pedestrian generator. Pedestrian can be expected to cross Route 299 from other commercial establishments at this intersection. It is also noted that the northwest quadrant does not currently have sidewalk up to the intersection. It's interesting how sidewalk, it's singular, anyway. But there is the potential for pedestrians to continue on the shoulder from the end of the sidewalk to the signal. Therefore, the signal should be upgraded to include crosswalks and pedestrian signals on all four quadrants. Please consider requiring the developer to construct the left-hand sidewalk in the northwest quadrant of the intersection. For this to function safely for pedestrians, the channelized island at Route 299 and North Popcorners Road needs to be eliminated. This will bring the westbound free flow, right turn onto North Popcorners Road under signal control, slowing down right turn traffic while increasing safe operations of the proposed driveway on North Popcorners Road. The right turn slip ramp on the east side of the signal should include a bike lane, adjacent to the travel lane, so that bicyclists are not tracked by right turn vehicles. It actually sounds like all this is because of CBS, now that I'm reading it.
Mm-hmm.
Because it says, CBS will be a new pedestrian generator, and then this, and this, and this. For this to function safely for pedestrians, this all has to happen. Because the board is not, it's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mayor, what's that? Yeah. Parcer of syntax here. I mean, it's only, it doesn't say anything about having it, eliminating it before CBS was proposed.
Well, the reason, as I understand, if you cross, if CBS, if you cross the, the plane, that's on patrol, are you concerned that, that people around, or, or, or?
No, I, yeah.
No, but, but the point is that, that the way it's written suggests that it's the proposed development on this site, specifically CBS, they mentioned, that is treated as a threshold or something of that sort, that it might not otherwise.
Have you done the, the, the pedestrian stuff?
Well, yeah.
There's no, there's no pedestrian track.
I don't want to get, okay, I get into a lengthy conversation. That, this is a five-lane road, all right? It is the widest road in the town. And the idea that all of a sudden people are going to be blocking to cross that street, because there's a drugstore, and a burger place, and something else, is to me, leading the wrong assumption. And so the idea that all of a sudden, it would be much safer to actually put traffic on the other side, but that's beside the point. I just don't, I don't feel like this was, I don't, to me, the basic assumptions about why all of these changes have to happen here are flawed. And that's why I would like somebody from DOT to come and really explain to us. And furthermore, months ago, I suggested, you could still do this, you could still have a pedestrian crosswalk, and have a signalized slip lane, there would be crosswalk control, because presumably this is going to be a four-way stop pedestrian activity in control, otherwise for that intersection, it makes no sense. So you could put a traffic light on a pole in the slip lane or just before, so when some pedestrian hits the button, that light along with all the others becomes red, and people coming into the slip that way would have to stop. And so you don't get rid of the slip lane. And I asked, in the summer, that that would be sent to the DOT, but it never happened. I got caught in a bureaucracy.
It's, it's actually my understanding that this sidewalk plan has been around for a while, and it was part of a plan to make it safe for students to walk to and from the high school. And that's how long it's been going on, and that this was actually in the mix prior to CBS. That's my understanding.
There's improvements on South Pud, but it's going from main street all the way past high school. Actually, it's whitening and pedestrian, um, bike paths, multi-use paths, because I understand it's going to be on the shoulders, or whitening some, but quite a bit.
Isn't there a name, a name for that? Like, when we?
Yeah.
Pass that.
But there's sidewalk, but it's just the bike path.
It's, uh, it's pedestrian bike path, and it's now on the shoulders. We were going to have it off, so there was a strip there between that and money, I guess. So it's becoming shoulders, white shoulders now. It's, um, South Pud.
South Pud.
It's something, it sounds better than turned out. They're doing acquisition right now, and they're supposed to go to construction, I think, by fall next year. Maybe, yeah, pushback, six months, three years.
All right, well, send everyone a vote.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, that we adjourn this meeting and continue at another time, because it's getting late, and we could go on forever here.
Well, I love the, I love your motion, but I think we should maybe really quick just talk about the very last thing about a letter received, because it's relevant to CBS. Even though they didn't have to talk back the letter, but I think it's a relevant, same point that.
They didn't really take it back, they just took part of it back.
Look at the angels.
And the, and the.
Yeah. That, you know, we're, this project is going on and on. And, you know, New Paul's family here who's carrying the guns. That's hard to say.
And, and the family pays taxes every year, and they, they can't use their property.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, maybe that.
The, the family that owns the property where CBS is being proposed.
Yeah, it's, well, it's interesting, because I, I know someone's already provisioned with CBS at New Paul, yet none of them said, let's pay it together and buy the property and keep it the way it is. Just reading that sentence from that letter. So, um.
I don't think that people making an effort to sell the property is any of our concern. I think that we're not holding up that we're trying to do the best for the community, and that they certainly had other options to structure their contract for sale. They could have structured this with the person that had it locked in for purchase, would pay the costs of maintaining or taxes in term. I mean, there are lots of different options, and we can't be responsible for that.
I agree completely. I'm just saying, I think sometimes these things go running on, and just to have in the back of our minds, that like, it has, you know, we need to keep moving forward.
So, just for your question, um, that, in theory, when you have this whole plan to save and, while, while, if, 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 if,[1378.12]